Welcome to the November 10, 2020, meeting, regular meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. I would like to ask staff to proceed with roll call. Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Wong?
Here, present.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Commissioner Feng?
Here, coming.
Commissioner Saxena?
Go ahead.
And Chair Moore?
Present. Thank you. Okay, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable noticing requirements. Members of the public may offer public comment by email to planning@cupidino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission and make them part of the record. So we begin with item one, approval of the minutes. Subject to the draft minutes of the October 27, 2020 meeting, recommended action approve or modify the draft minutes of October 27, 2020. Please take a moment to review the minutes. Thank you. Okay, so I move that we approve the minutes of October 27, 2020. Do you have a second?
A second. Oh, did you get a second? So.
I do have a second. I am seeing, I am seeing a hand raised on this item. So I'm going to open this up for public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Are you there?
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, I was doing for oral, and I still have trouble on this tablet figuring out where the raise the hand thing is. I apologize. So this is for oral, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, all right. Okay, so the public comment is closed. And did we have any comments from the commissioners? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Okay, yes, thank you. Vice Chair Wong?
I'm first, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Takahashi?
Hi.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
And Chair Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now we move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. And I do have a hand raised. Jennifer, welcome.
Yes, thank you, I'm getting the hang of this. Anyway, thank you, I hope you all can hear me. This is Jennifer Griffin, and I'm glad you all were having the meeting tonight. One item I wanted to talk about is the potential closure of elementary schools and junior highs in the Cupertino Union School District. I have recently been made aware of issues with that. I will, I will confess that I spent most of my time in the last couple of months, like everyone else with COVID, being overly very, very concerned about SB 35, VAALCO development potential rollout, and SB 50 coming back again. That is where my time has been spent. I have not been concentrating on what has been happening with the school district. I understand that times are difficult, but I do not think that this is the time, or the year, or the place to be closing elementary schools or junior highs in Cupertino. The public does not have the ability to go to meetings yet. Hopefully, we will, maybe by June, but I don't, I think it is a very unwise decision to make any decisions about potential closures of schools. I'm also very, very concerned that there may be the potential that they would try to sell the land that the schools are on, and that that land would go to housing. We, if we do that, we cannot take the land back. We all know how expensive the land is in Los Altos, Cupertino, Santa, well, not Santa Clara, West San Jose, et cetera. I think that is an unwise move, and I do not, I don't, I don't want any of the land from school, closed schools sold. That has to be a community decision. It cannot be put up to the school board or to a citizens advisory committee to determine what happens to the school property. It affects everyone. I am scared to death that the Scott Wiener crowd, the SB 35, the SB 50 people who want to put four plexes on suburban lots and eight plexes, they don't think things out, they want to close schools, and where are they going to educate these new students that are going to live in these tenement buildings on our suburban lots? No, this is not a good time to be doing this. And I did send a letter to the Planning Commission, the city council this morning, and I sent it to the Cupertino Union School Board this morning. I am the product of local schools, as is my husband, and some of those schools are on the closure list. Let's, don't do it now, there is no reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And I see no further hands raised. So we've finished oral communications, and Madam Clerk, we have some written communications which are in our files, I believe.
Yes, we received one email earlier this afternoon in regards to item two.
Okay, great. Okay, so we have no items on consent calendar, so we move to our public hearings and new business. Item two, subject, review of ABAG's Regional Housing Needs Allocation Proposed Methodology Report, San Francisco Bay Area 2023 to 2031. Recommended action, review the report and recommend whether the city council should comment on the RENA process methodology or proposed preliminary draft local RENA. And we begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. Like you mentioned, this is the review of our regional housing needs allocation, and we want to propose, bring forward to you a study session update so you understand what, where we are, where we are in the process, what's being proposed, and a schedule and where we are within that schedule. With us tonight, we have Pugh Ocho, Plan Manager, she will be making the presentation. We have Karen Teederman, our partner, partner from Goldfarb and Littman, Consulting Attorney from the C Attorney's Office, and of course, Sepp Peta from the C Attorney's Office. And with that, I will hand it over to Pugh for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Can you reveal my screen?
Yes, perfect, thank you.
All right, so, I mean, this is really to review the proposed RENA methodology that was proposed by ABAG. And just in terms of timeline and where we are in the process, ABAG established, I should say, HCD provided ABAG the Regional Housing Needs Determination in June 2020, where ABAG had 30 days to appeal that Regional Housing Needs Distribution, which ABAG chose not to do, and therefore, that established in July the ABAG Region's Regional Housing Need. After that, the Housing Methodology Committee, which is a committee that was established in October 2019 to recommend to the ABAG executive staff how this RHND should be distributed between the different local cities, recommended its methodology. That methodology was published in October 2020, at the end of October 2020. There is a 30-day comment period on that proposed methodology, which ends on Friday, November 27. Following that, in spring 2021, this draft methodology will be submitted to HCD for its review and approval. ABAG will have to adopt this draft methodology, and that is also expected to occur in spring 2021, prior to submission to HCD for its review. Following that, in spring 2021, the draft allocations will be released to the different jurisdictions. That will be the draft final allocations to each of the cities. After that, each city, each jurisdiction will have the ability to potentially appeal that RENA number. Finally, in December 2021, the final RENA will be established for each jurisdiction, and each jurisdiction will have to adopt its housing element by January 2023. And that is in state law, by state law. So we are here in the process with the red box, just to indicate where we are in the process of getting to our final housing element and our final RENA allocation. The Regional Housing Needs Determination that was established in July 2020 was for 441,176 units, and they were divided up by different income levels. Approximately 26% of it was identified to be for very low-income households, and about 42%, 43% was for above moderate-income households, with almost an even split of low-income and moderate, moderate-income households in the middle. With regard to the RENA methodology, there is, there are certain statutory objectives that need to be met. First of all, it has to increase the housing supply and the mix of housing types, tenure, and affordability in an equitable manner across the region. It also was to promote internal development and socioeconomic equity while protecting the environment and agricultural resources, and also meeting greenhouse gas targets. It would also be used to promote improved interregional jobs-housing relationships, including a balance between low-wage jobs and homes affordable to those low-wage earners, which is essentially a jobs-housing fit. Also, to balance the disproportionate household income distributions, essentially what the state law wants to do is have more high-income RENA to lower-income areas and low-income RENA to high-income areas. And finally, to affirmatively further fair housing, and that's essentially done by identifying strategies to overcome patterns of segregation in this region. With regard to the methodology, there are really three parts to the methodology. One is to establish a baseline allocation, which almost every jurisdiction would get. And that is established, there are different ways of establishing that. The way that was recommended is that each jurisdiction, each jurisdiction's share of the region's total households in 2015, as projected by the Plan Bay Area, is what's being used. So in essence, for Cupertino, this is approximately 1%. Essentially, in 2015, Cupertino is expected to have 1% of the region's total households.
2015 or 2019?
2015. So that's what is being used or proposed currently by the Housing Methodology Committee. There were two other alternatives that were considered by the Housing Methodology Committee. One was to consider each jurisdiction's share of the region's total 2019 households, but that was rejected because it would continue the existing regional development patterns, which some say is skewed already to begin with. There's also a second alternative that they looked at, which was forecasted growth in the blueprint for each jurisdiction up until 2015. So in essence, if the current trend has been fairly flat, the blueprint, which is Plan Bay Area, expects that trend to go significantly higher, so at a much faster pace. And therefore, that was rejected because it would have further concentrated housing in projected growth areas. So in essence, the Housing Methodology Committee felt like the jurisdiction's share of the region's total households in 2015 was the middle ground, and so that's what they picked. With regard to the other parts of the methodology, there are factors and factor weights. So what they also decided was, in order to ensure that the statutory objectives of the methodology were met, the HMC also looked at various factors and eventually ended up picking the three. They essentially decided to build up the allocation from the base up, and so they decided to use different factors for the lower-income categories and certain different ones for the moderate and above-moderate income categories. So on the lower-income categories, they utilized a split of 70% to access to high-opportunity areas, 15% to job proximity by auto, 15% to job proximity by using transit. And on the moderate and above-moderate income units, they basically decided on different split and different factors, which was, again, focusing on the access to high-opportunity areas in order to meet that equity requirement, and a higher percentage of weight to job proximity by auto. And I'll go into each of these factors a little bit more in the next couple of slides. With regard to access to high-opportunity areas, essentially, they, they looked at, you know, the focus was to provide or distribute more units to cities or jurisdictions that have access to high-opportunity areas that are identified as either a high or highest resource on the 2020 opportunity maps that were produced by HCD. And this is a screenshot from that particular GIS data that they have, which essentially shows that Cupertino and some of the surrounding areas has the highest resource. And in essence, because this was weighted at 70% in the lower-income and 60% on the, on the higher-income categories, this made an adjustment of about 60% to Cupertino's baseline allocation, so an upward increase of 60%. With regard to the other two factors, job proximity auto essentially is the share of the region's total jobs that can be accessed by jurisdiction, or from a jurisdiction by 30-minute auto commute. That adjusted Cupertino's baseline by 30%, that factor. And this was weighted 15% for the low-income allocations and 60% for the mod and mod-plus allocations. Similarly, they also use the job proximity transit, which allocates more units to cities with access to jobs by a 45-minute transit commute. This actually provides a reduction of 20% to Cupertino's baseline allocation. This was weighted for 15% for the lower-income allocations, but has no weightage for the mod or the mod-plus allocations in the proposed methodology. And this is just a chart that indicates what Cupertino's potential RENA allocations might be based on the current draft blueprint numbers. Now, just, just to add a little bit more complexity to this, ABAG is still working on their blueprint, which is the Plan Bay Area 2050, and that has not been finalized. That is expected to be finalized at the end of 2020. So these numbers are still in flux. It seems that there are certain policies that the ABAG Executive Board have adopted, which will impact the final numbers. So these are just projected draft numbers at this point. There are some areas for comment for the Plan Commission if it wishes to. What, the first is essentially to reanalyze or review the baseline allocation. Does it wish to use or recommend that an alternative baseline be used? Just as a background, in August 2020, the City's Association sent a letter critiquing the road projections from Plan Bay Area 2050, and they also urged that, in addition to that, they urged that Plan Bay Area 2050 not be used as a baseline for purposes of the methodology. And they identified a whole host of reasons, including they didn't believe that it achieved the key goals of the Sustainable Community Strategy. It was, you know, there was unrealistic household and employment growth targets for Santa Clara County particularly. There was a, in addition to that, they also commented that the methodology would be impacted if the draft blueprint was used due to a number of things, which is, there was a timing issue in terms of when the Housing Methodology Committee would recommend their proposed methodology and when the actual blueprint would be finalized. They, they believe there was some double counting of factors potentially. They also brought up the issue that, based on a Plan Bay Area, there was actually a reduction in the, or rather, that areas that were high-job-producing and had better access to transit had almost a lower distribution of growth than the average regional growth. Even for cities like Oakland, San Francisco, the, the actual growth targets were lower. Also, the fact that the growth was being projected to be in the South Bay, where there is a lack of access to transit, and they were in general just concerned that the, the growth, which ranged between 30 and 50% for many cities, was unachievable. For Cupertino particularly, there are not very many large sites left for redevelopment. And if we were to look at all the sites that do not currently have housing on them, they might actually have office development on them. And as such, if we were to rezone them, it would mean that we would lose jobs to accommodate that housing, and therefore, the job growth that's envisioned under Plan Bay Area 2050 for Cupertino would likely not be, would not occur. In addition, there, there is also a thought that duplexes and fourplexes would accommodate a bulk of that, of this growth. However, there are few sites that would likely be considered appropriate under Housing Element Law for the lower-income categories, particularly smaller sites, such as those that could be developed with duplexes and fourplexes, which just puts the city in a pretty hard spot. Again, the proposed methodology also removes housing from job area served by BARTs and Caltrain. With regard to the factors and factor weights, just wanted to point out that the jobs proximity transit is used as a factor for the lower-income categories, but it is not used for the moderate or the mod-plus categories. And this does not necessarily advance GHG goals, which just, you know, kind of puts the burden of transit use on the lower and lower-income categories, but not necessarily on the mod or the above-mod categories. With that, I just wanted to conclude this presentation, and happy to answer any questions for the commission to consider, you know, should the city comment? And what comments does the Planning Commission recommend? Thank you.
Chair Moore, I will add that the comments I will receive from you tonight, we will communicate that to City Council and recommend that to City Council and gather all the comments together and formulate a potential comment letter. So, thank you.
Great, okay, so we begin with some clarifying questions, and then we'll open it up for the public, and we'll bring it back for some final comments and decide what we're going to send on to City Council. Do any of the commissioners have some initial questions? Yes, Vice Chair Wong?
Do, in terms of comments to be added here. I think it's important to recognize that in, in a few studies and in a few areas, the double counting aspect should really be pointed out here. There are a couple of studies, including the Embarcadero Institute study, that basically showed how there was double counting coming from Senate Bill 828, co-sponsored by the Bay Area Council, the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and co-authored by our friend State Senator Scott Wiener, that basically created a double count by using incorrect vacancy rates and double counting. And I think that's one place we should actually look at that and also comment, and I think other cities should join in, because this number has actually created a baseline that is actually creating an exaggeration in terms of what's going on. And there's also an assumed existing housing need part of that, that actually creates a, well, creates a vicious cycle in terms of calculating what the existing housing numbers were versus the state's existing housing need, which has really been something that's not properly evaluated. And I think someone should be taking a look at that. I think there's also another mistaken assumption in here that's actually important about overcrowding and cost burden that has been set up as projections. And I think that may not have been something that had been factored in time, but I think it's really important for council to read the Embarcadero Institute study, take some of those targets, use that as a way to communicate back that we are projecting numbers that are much greater than what can be done. And then, more importantly, to factor the fact, factor the cost of actually providing housing somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000 per unit for what they're trying to achieve may not even be fiscally possible. So I think those are areas to definitely consider.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
I had a question about the staff, to the staff. For the given allocation as we have now, assuming there is no change, what would be, like, if all single-family homes in Cupertino were eligible to become duplexes? Like, how many units would be needed? Like, how much of Cupertino would, a single-family neighborhoods would have to be converted into duplexes? Ballpark number.
We'd have to do some GIS analysis for what, for the question that you're asking us to answer, Commissioner Saxena. In, in total, Cupertino has about 21,000 housing units, give or take. Of that, how many are single-family homes versus multifamily or planned developments, which is just townhomes? That breakdown is something that we'd have to look to GIS for, and we can certainly look into that.
That would be very useful for us. I think some of the earlier public comments had great questions about schools, and I think we do need to understand the impact of multifamily housing versus single-family housing on schools, because anything you build going forward will affect the schools also. And I think we need to, we should have a very clear picture and plan holistically, taking into account all the different services that the city provides and are able to sustain them and to grow the city in a manner where they can sustain. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Saxena. Do I have any other comments or questions? Okay, I do have.
I did have, if I could.
Great.
Just as a point for something that would be useful for staff, you know, I'll comment later. I think that a lot of the concern about the, the overall plan has to do with the validity of the baseline calculation. You know, the baseline calculation is done in a particular way for our region, you know, by ABAG. And I'm curious, I think it would be useful to perhaps present some, present some information about how that kind of calculation, the equivalent of the baseline calculation was done in some of the other regions, you know, in Southern California, and in areas which are not a kind of a multi-county structure as we do here, just as a comparison. You know, I think that, and I'm sure this will come up in discussion later, a lot of the, there is a particular flavor of distribution within the baseline calculation that, you know, it certainly wouldn't hold statewide. So I think that that's actually something very useful to, to bring to the further discussion on this point.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, I guess just clarification on the definition of the high resource areas. What, what constitutes high resource?
So it is my understanding that the TCAC, which is the Tax Critic Association of California, I believe, they established, or they determine in conjunction with the Institute of Others and Belonging, or Belonging and Others, which is an arm of. uh, which is uh a an arm of um the University of Berkeley. Uh, it's an institute over there where they established what um high opportunity areas are. And they looked at a multitude of factors in determining uh where these high opportunity areas are. These are considered to be areas that have or would uh provide enough resources um for low-wage income workers um to do better uh and to be integrated into uh, you know, establish or provide an equitable way of um having resources provided to them to do better. And so because statutorily, that method methodology had to look at social equity, um, using those T CAC, T CAC maps for purposes of identifying areas or identifying how to distribute the arena uh in an equitable fashion, that's why that particular factor was used um in in determining that. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Takahashi?
No, but that's okay.
Uh, this is Karen Tiedemann. Can I join in?
Please.
So the high opportunity areas i- is, if you said, look at a variety of factors, a big one is um well-performing schools. So that is a reason why Cupertino shows up as a high opportunity area. That's probably one of the main reasons.
Great, thank you.
Wow, that's interesting timing. Um, so I was wondering, Pew, if you could go back to the chart which showed each of the different income categories? And uh it had um the totals, the the uh, the six thousand two hundred uh units at the bottom and each, each different income category. Yep, okay, that's it, all right. So I have a, the same or similar question as Commissioner Takahashi. Under very low, it's that access to high um opportunity areas, right? Okay, so it's that seventy percent. And uh, to me, it makes it look as though they're wanting to put uh, or you're gonna have housing that would uh, people with very low income would qualify for in areas um would be high opportunity. And in Cupertino, when I think of those types of jobs uh that we have here, the tech jobs primarily, uh, they, those workers would not qualify as very low income. And it's my understanding that here in uh very low income is the thirty to fifty percent of the median area income, which is around ninety-nine thousand, we'll say a hundred thousand. So very low income, we're looking at thirty to fifty thousand dollars per year. So I'm, I'm wondering about those numbers um and how they, how they kind of fit together. If you could explain a little more about that. Do they mean that, you know, they're thinking that we are going to have, you know, twelve-hundred-and-sixty-eight very low-income jobs created? And we need to provide the housing for those jobs? Or is it some other um thinking that they're, they're doing?
So, in essence, this is just the um, this is just taking what the state has said that the region must produce. And they've just been distributing, this is just a way to distribute those units to each of the cities, which has nothing to do with actual production of jobs in that income category. So state, when it does its projections, it basically says this region needs to provide housing for four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand units. And this methodology just takes those number of units and just uh distributes it across the region in some fashion. And the proposed fashion that's been adopted or being recommended is um resulting in these distributions for Cupertino. And I think um Karen might have something to add to that.
Yeah, let me try. I mean, this, the whole issue of high opportunity areas is um a little confusing. But the idea stems from a desire to um avoid segregation of low-income households, which in the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, which is where these are generated from, it's a desire to ensure that there's a more even distribution of tax credits, which is the primary funding source for low-income housing. So it is looking at a variety of factors, schools being a very big one, also um income of households. And essentially trying to integrate low-income housing into neighborhoods where there might not be any. So it isn't necessarily looking at a um specific jobs housing fit, although that is one of the other things that the allocation factors are trying to address. But it's, there's a lot of goals they're trying to address, and they're not all gonna fit perfectly a- as they try to address them. So the opportunity areas, as you can see by the weighting factors, was generally given the greatest weight. Um, and then some of the other ones about jobs were given lower weights.
Hmm, okay, so they, they probably were not considering the, our school funding situation when they did this. And those units, um, if we go back to that table, those, those units are most likely going to be apartments um that would have perhaps inadequate funding coming to the schools uh inevitably uh in the K through eight range. Um, and you mentioned tax credits. Could you elaborate on that?
Right, so the low-income housing tax credit, which is a federal program, um essentially uh allows low-income housing projects to attract investment from uh, it's generally large banks at this point who can benefit from a tax credit. Uh, typically, if a project has low, low-income housing tax credits, the equity that is provided by that investor can be sixty to seventy percent of the total funding. So it has become the largest funding source for low-income housing. The tax credits are allocated by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. So in their process of allocating, they are using these oper- high opportunity areas to determine their allocations. So areas that are considered higher opportunity um will get a greater percentage of the allocations going forward.
Okay, and so we have about, it was over, a little over twenty-five-hundred of these very low and low-income units. Um, is saying that that would cost about two-point-five billion dollars. Is that accurate, uh, given what the veranda costs nearly eight-hundred thousand per unit?
Um, probably in that range. I mean, I think I heard somebody say earlier that your unit costs are between seven-hundred thousand and eight-hundred thousand per unit. So, you know, a little less than that, but yeah.
Okay, and is it, is it a rational assumption, reasonable assumption that uh we would get that much uh, that, that much of the um low-income housing tax credits allocated to Cupertino to help cover that? I mean, what's reasonable?
Um, it's probably you would not get that much allocated. Um, so first of all, tax credits are, there's a cap on the total tax credits each year that are available in California. It is a per capita amount based on the total population. Um, and it is highly competitive right now. In particular, we are seeing much more competition than we've seen in the past. And so, no, and you know, some of this would have to be funded in other ways.
Hmm. Hmm, okay, and the, another issue that I have is um, we have a fifteen percent uh requirement in our general plan for uh the below-market rate units, which are the very low and low-income units. So it's my understanding that we're only allowed to ask a developer for fifteen percent. And our total is looking like it's a little over six thousand. Uh, so if we're supposed to actually meet the twenty-five-hundred or so very low and low-income units, we're going to have to, oh, I calculated this out. It's uh, we're gonna have to build about seventeen thousand units if fifteen percent of those are gonna be um very low and low income. So I, I was wondering if, if, if that's something that's uh reasonable for HCD to be asking, because they seem to be asking us something that we can't achieve. And then it's also sounding like we don't have the funding to um build this either. And I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this all correctly as well.
Um, I think you're understanding it correctly. I think the, the issue with the housing element is your obligation is to identify sites where these units can be built. Um, the city's obligation is not to actually build the units. But obviously, there is more and more pressure on cities to actually produce these units. But how you go about doing that has always been the piece that's missing from the policy goals because of the funding and because of the issues you've raised, like on inclusionary. That's not really addressed in the housing element process.
Okay, but they do have, they do have a form of punishment to cities if we don't permit.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, and then I, one last bit is we have the uh twelve-hundred-and-one very low and low-income units at the Valco site. And I was wondering how that is taken care of, um, you know, when they pull permits? Or um, you know, what can we, what, how can we comment on that? Because we have this, this kind of odd issue with S B thirty-five, with the Valco S B thirty-five plan, where we have this a- approved plan, we have this, you know, large number of affordable units. Um, they haven't had a permit uh pulled yet for them. And we still are susceptible to more S B thirty-five projects moving forward. Is it, it just, it, that to me seems like there's a, a problem in the law where we should have some credit for this having happened. Um, and is there, is there anything we can do about that?
Yes, actually, so it, the units are under construction. Any units that have not received their certificate of occupancy by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two can count for this next cycle um for meeting this obligation. It will be based on the actual number of units that are affordable. So the twelve oh one could count towards part of your obligation, as I understand the timing on the Valco.
Okay, so let, let me just double check. So if they, any time between now, is this any time between now and June thirtieth, or?
Any, so anything that's permitted now, if they don't have a certificate of occupancy by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, so their certificate of occupancy is after that date, then it will count in this next housing element cycle.
Okay, and I'm just, probably, this is probably a question for Pew. We, we don't issue um partial certificates of occupancy if a certain building gets completed and then they're waiting on another phase. Um, does it, would it all have to be um completed?
Um, I think it just depends on um the building permit itself. So that's usually up to the um, you know, it's by unit. The certificate of occupancy is by unit, not necessarily by building. So we'll have to look to see what the conditions of approval are for that particular project to see uh whether we can issue any certificates of occupancy or not.
Okay, okay, so ideally, we would want to have something to, to have the certificate of occupancy after June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, ultimately, that, that would do us the most good with regards to these numbers.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? From the commissioners, any, anything else? I'm not seeing anyone. Um, I was also wondering um if we could have a, a comparison chart with our neighbors. Uh, I'm kind of uh curious about what their population is versus their allocation. And I, I do have the table um showing the, the jurisdictions around ours and the totals. But I was hoping that we could, or when this gets to City Council, if they could have that information and perhaps just another um two columns, one showing their population and then one showing the um a, a ratio. So they have some sense of how, how we were allocated compared to the neighbors. Um, and there was something with regards to V T A, a kind of reduction in service. I don't know if we have a, some status update on that. Uh, there was a survey recently um in October, I believe it was due October sixteenth. And it was a survey to see if people, um, what they thought of a seventy percent or eighty or ninety percent reduction in service. And on uh Stevens Creek Boulevard, for instance, it would reduce the service to every thirty minutes. Um, which I, I don't think is certainly quality uh transit. So it, I was wondering if any of those um types of changes that we're seeing locally um are incorporated? I'm gonna assume they're not, but I'm, you know, curious about that. These would essentially be pandemic-related changes, not just, not just that we're seeing uh people leaving the region, but we're also having reductions in transit service.
Right, and, and so V T A's uh proposed changes to service are um supposed to be covering that they're, they're only, they're only looking at a service plan for about a year. Um, where the high uh, highly-used service that they have through Cupertino, which is their route along Stevens Creek, they're not proposing to necessarily reduce the headways. But they are proposing to reduce some hours of um operation, which are very early morning on the midnight hours. Um, and so when we talked uh to EVAC staff, uh, they're basically, even for their baseline, even for their projections uh in the blueprint, they're not looking necessarily at the provision facts. Um, and so uh these are not accounted for uh in the allocation. They're not accounted for in the regional housing that came from um HCD. And they're not accounted for as a result in the housing, the reallocation either.
Okay, and I have another question still on the transit. So it sounded as though there was a lack of equity, where, whereas they made an assumption that if they were lower income, that they were going to use transit. And there, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like though there was a lack of encouragement, perhaps, you could say, um, towards the higher-income uh individuals using transit. And I was wondering if you could explain that and maybe show us the numbers a little bit on that.
So when the uh Housing Methodology Committee essentially picked the factors and the weights that they attribute to each of those factors, they only picked two of the factors on the higher-income categories. So they only put, put, picked the access to um high-opportunity areas and the jobs proximity to auto uh for the higher-income categories. Um, which they weighted the jobs proximity auto at sixty percent um for the higher-income categories. But for the lower-income categories, um, the, the total job proximity factor, both auto and transit, were weighted in total by thirty percent. So for the fifteen percent split on each.
Okay, so just to clarify, when they say jobs proximity auto, just in layman's terms, what are they saying?
They're basically saying that jurisdictions that have a higher share of jobs that are accessible with a thirty-minute commute by car get a higher share. Versus um jurisdictions, um, similarly, um jurisdictions that have um a proximity to jobs uh with a forty-five-minute commute using transit get a higher share. So for Cupertino, because transit um is not as um strong as in some other communities, we got a reduction of twenty percent. That factor resulted in a reduction of twenty percent.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I mean, there's a lot of information in here, and I, I did spend a little time um on their uh, their, I don't know what to call it, what their name was for it, but you could, there, it was their uh, oh, uh, Pew, if you could help me out with what they called that. It's the slider scale where you could test different uh ratios.
Oh, the interactive map?
The calculator thing, yeah. Yeah, so I was wondering if anyone else had tried that out and uh found it helpful?
I, I would say I did try it out, and um it was the Arena Visualization Tool, I think you're talking about. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
Oh, yeah, I, I did try it, and it's uh, for those that haven't, it's uh, there's arena-factors dot MTCanalytics dot org. Um, a bunch of A-BAG folks and their Housing Methodology Committee uh trying to rationalize the, the methodology uh in terms of their allocation. So it's interesting. I think this is the tool they use to, to have those discussions on scenarios uh as well, so.
I think it added a level of complexity to what they were doing. Okay. Okay, so.
No comment, no comment.
Okay, if we don't have any further clarifying questions, I'm going to move on to, uh, public comment. Any further questions? All right, moving on to public comment, and I see Jennifer Griffin.
Uh, thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Chair Moore. I will start out, I'm going to read this statement that I had sent to the Planning Commission and City Council earlier today. Please let me be blunt and cut to the chase. I have zero expectations that this group of the ABAG Board for RENA and MTC can come up with competent, educated numbers for telling the Bay Area how much housing the cities are supposed to build for the future. The whole board is run like a circus with wild speculation. They seem to have made a very grave error and miscalculation in their basic ability to dictate how many thousands of housing units are supposed to be built, which has inflated the whole ridiculous housing numbers by a factor of tenfold. To make matters worse, they will not own up to the fact that this error was made, and yet they keep blaming all the cities for not building their exorbitant numbers of housing units, ignoring the fact that these numbers are based on a miscalculation. They blend, blender blindly along and yell at others for not falling to their knees to worship the ABAG Board in all of their glorious ineptitude. The same group also has decided they are going to ignore the pandemic. And we in the cities and neighborhoods are supposed to bow down and follow along in ABAG's Road to Rack and Ruins. ABAG wants us to pretend too that there is no pandemic, and they don't understand why we question their self-righteous assumption that everything is the same as pre-pandemic. Well, it's not the same. It's not, it does not matter how much work one did or did not do or did wrong before COVID. You can't just be like ostriches and bury your head in the sand and yell and say, "You have to do what we say and build these three billion housing units." It doesn't work that way. We will not blindly follow you anymore. Mistakes have been made, assumptions about the stupidity and gullibility of the general public have been made. The public who live in the neighborhoods and the cities that the board and others are trying to rezone and take control from. We know where the money comes from, the money to write these big housing bills, the money that is flowing into corrupt Oregon politics and is corrupting California politics. You can yell all you want, but the RENA numbers and the housing bills are based on farce. And I thank the heavens our eyes are open to this. This is dangerous stuff indeed. It is like some dark nightmare being thrust upon the people in the neighborhoods and the cities. And this nightmare does not care if it houses people. It only cares about money and power. Don't expect the public to follow meekly anymore. The RENA numbers and the big housing bills belong only in the theater of the absurd. No matter how much they yell about building ridiculous amounts of housing, the MTC and the ABAG, RENA Board and the HCD will be forever waiting for Godot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, I see no further hands raised from the public. Give them a second. All right. So I'm closing the public comment period. And do we have any further comments from the Planning Commission? I do think it's kind of interesting that Jennifer mentioned the theater of the absurd, absurd. I was thinking the very same thing and, and waiting for Godot, uh, from high school literature. It's interesting. Would anyone care to begin?
I'm happy to jump in. I'm just going to say that if we were to try to build the housing based on the seventeen thousand calculation and about eight hundred thousand per unit, um, you know, some builder or some amount of money would have to come into the city to do that. And that's about thirteen point six billion with a B dollars, um, which is, which is a pretty big number. So, so to get that kind of funding to build to what RENA allocations, um, is clearly off. Uh, I think it's also important to let council know, it's important to bring other cities into this conversation. Uh, we can't fight this non-elected group of regional coordinators on our own. Uh, ABAG and MTC are a little bit awry at the moment. And if they can't own up to their numbers and their mistakes, um, I think the other cities need to call it out. Um, you know, I, I think it should get to a point where, uh, each of the cities decides to file class action lawsuit for actually using the wrong assumptions for their RENA calculations, right? And ABAG just following along. So, so I think something like that should be, um, put out there. Uh, because those numbers affect our quality of life, numbers that are being diverted, investments that are diverting for, for housing that may be overhousing by not accounting for a post-pandemic world, uh, as well as a work-from-anywhere environment that's going to emerge. You can see that already, um, with, with some of the job losses, uh, some of the job migrations going to other states. Uh, I think it's important factors for council to bring up.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else care to comment?
Sure, I will, if that's okay.
Sure, Commissioner Feng.
So I, I wanted to comment on a few of the items. Uh, first of all, I felt that the report that was provided was much clearer than, uh, than what they had, had distributed in the first generation of, of the discussion here, so, which would be, I don't know, nine months or a year ago. I think that we could clarify the representation, some of the, so how some of the numbers are derived, uh, which would help people understand what's going on with the methodology here. Particularly things like, you know, access to high opportunity areas. What, what we're seeing in, what, what I saw in the staff report is there's kind of a, a, uh, end number which, which kind of says, well, you know, it's a plus sixty, plus sixty percent, um, over the baseline effect. Now, I'm not questioning that that is numerically the number, but I think the derivation of that is actually pretty important. Uh, one of the things that happens is the first step of this process is that there's a baseline established, I'll come back to that. The next thing that happens after that is a grading factor. That grading factor ranges from point five to one, one point five percent. Um, that actually has the, a limiting effect, you know, rather than things being proportional to the measure of income that was being used, you know, to kind of establish opportunity. That does have the effect of limiting it to being plus fifty percent from what the baseline was. And then that sixty percent comes from, um, a factor that, that kind of rejiggles the numbers to add up to a hundred percent when, when it's all said and done. Um, so it's a kind of a math correction. But I think that's an important part to, to look at, because I think if you were, if that number were unconstrained by the relative income, the relative opportunity, uh, in this area versus others, then it actually would have been a much, much larger number. So there was a, there was a, a, a breaking factor there that, um, that did help moderate those numbers, uh, a, a little bit. Um, you actually saw that effect in the one area where our, um, you know, where we had a, a decrease from the baseline number, which was, uh, transit, you know, the transit measure for, um, the lower two classes of, uh, of BMR housing. You know, that was an example of one where we scored below what, you know, a one point oh ratio and got a reduction as a result. I would also say that there's another, I think, pretty favorable thing that, that was a result of this methodology. And that was that, um, unlike the current RENA, where about twenty percent of the, um, allocation goes to, uh, you know, market rate housing, above moderate or market rate housing. Um, in this RENA, the number of, um, units that are in the, uh, above-market rate category would be sixty-one percent, much more achievable. And that actually, you know, I think there was, uh, um, the vice chair mentioned, you know, it was concerned about this enormous number of dollars that had to come into the community. And some of those dollars actually do come from the fact that, that, you know, market rate housing is profitable. And that's what helps fund the creation of, of BMR housing. So I think that that's actually, you know, in, in cycle five, when you're talking about two, you know, the affordable allocation out of, of, out of a thousand sixty-four, it's, you know, a little over two hundred. Then there, it becomes an interesting math problem about, well, how you, how do you, uh, how many houses do you have to build to be able to get, you know, fifteen percent of them yielding eight hundred units? And it's a very large number. And that, of course, is exactly the intention of, of HCD. That is, you know, they, they are seeking to, um, create, uh, create a mechanism through which low-income housing needs are identified and you try to achieve those. And if you, along the way, happen to achieve building a lot more market rate housing, that's a good thing as well. It just isn't something that requires an incentive from the government. So I think this is actually a positive thing. Uh, it also means, for instance, we can get much better progress, you know. In, in years past, and I believe this would actually be cycle, probably cycle four. Uh, you know, we, we did quite well on cycle four because the number of market rate homes was, was much, much higher than the, um, the percentage, uh, allocation. It's probably double, I think, if I remember correctly, from that. You know, the cycle ended in twenty fourteen or, or twenty thirteen. The capability to reduce market rate housing, and I realize, I, I will condition that by saying, you know, the way that they count, uh, the way that they count new housing is different now than it was then. So, uh, you know, we were counting remodels to a greater extent than, than you're allowed to count them now. But just things progressing on their own, there's much greater opportunity to produce market rate housing. And that actually makes it, I think, easier for us to achieve the overall numbers. I talked a little about, let's see, I had enough here about coefficients. The coefficients, the, the, um, the weighting factor. Uh, I think that the, uh, they did a good, good job reporting on that as well in the appendix, where they looked at equity factors and how those distributed, you know. So what you saw are all those many, many pages or charts where they kind of said, hey, you know, the top twenty-five uh, communities by this, by this record are, are in a, um, are expected to carry a burden, which is in proportion, you know, it's generally in proportion to what the rest of state is. And I think that, you know, so that was a clear objective of what they were trying, you can argue with whether that's a good objective or not. But, um, that's clearly one of the objectives that they were trying to, um, achieve. There were a few detailed points that, um, that I wanted to touch on. Uh, the Veranda, um, has high cost per unit, but a big part of the reason it's so high is because there are very, very few units, units there. It's much more expensive, and this is something, if you go and talk with, um, Kathy Carpenter, um, who, who ran that project. Uh, they kind of, they were interested in trying to, the opportunity came to do a project in Cupertino, they were interested in doing that. Uh, they didn't want to try to go to the normal kinds of numbers that they would have, which would be a taller building and more units and more economically efficient for them. They wanted to try to stick as closely as they could to, um, you know, to existing, existing zoning. And that, that's why, you know, there's, there's a relatively low number of units there and, and a high unit cost. I don't think anybody expects BMR funding, uh, to cover, you know, there isn't funding out there to cover all, all of the needs to try to meet these goals. But one of the things that happens is in a high opportunity area, uh, like Cupertino, and that's because there are jobs here. Uh, there's a potential, high potential for jobs, that, um, it is easier to attract, uh, low-income housing tax credits here, can be, no guarantee. It really depends on the projects that come forward. Uh, low-income housing tax credits, as we saw, um, in the Westport and, and, and in some versions of the Valco proposals, you know, will tend to be hundred percent, uh, BMR, um, you, you know, hundred percent BMR projects. Uh, that's the nature of how the, um, dollars, you know, you want to qualify for a low-income housing tax project. You can't, you can't do that if you're a mixed use. You can't do that if you have market rate units generally in the competitive market that we're in. So that, that becomes a question then about whether that, you know, can a community that, um, is strong economically otherwise, you know, does that make it a better or worse place to attract a project of that nature? But I think in general, the answer is better. Um, this is something San Jose studied as they were, um, you know, they made some changes, in their last, uh, general plan, which included the, uh, urban village planning. Uh, and I think some very forward-looking ideas about, we densify along certain areas so that, so that we maintain the character of the rest of the city. But unfortunately, you know, after a few years into that process, they found that, well, there's a problem here because rents don't support the kind of construction. Uh, and the only places that they could do that was in West San Jose and areas immediately adjacent to Cupertino, to areas like Cupertino. So there's, there's, you know, the, the economics work for, um, for projects to have that higher percentage of BMR and, and, um, to do things, you know, to look at, what does it take to attract a project that might be, you know, six stories tall instead of, instead of, you know, two stories or three stories? Um, there was a, I think there was a little bit of talk kind of sideways about SB thirty-five. I would comment there that SB thirty-five, you know, which some view as the punishment, you know, punishment for not meeting your allocation, even along the way. I mean, you know, there's a midpoint evaluation for that as well. Um, that only, that only really runs till, you know, through twenty fifteen, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-five, excuse me. Uh, so only about halfway, it only applies in half, half of this cycle. So I guess the, the final thing I guess I would say here is that, um, I do take issue with the baseline calculation. And I think that, um, you know, the reason, the reason you immediately see problems, if you compare Cupertino to its immediate neighbors, one of the things you see that immediately, um, is kind of interesting about it is if you look at the overall projected, uh, population for the region, at one percent, that's actually differentially much, much higher than we are today. So, uh, you know, I think that there's, there's a factor there, which is, you know, um, and this was independent of the RENA numbers, there's a factor that was placing, you know, a great deal of growth in this area. I think that that probably needs to be looked at to really make sure that that, that that's something that makes sense. And, and then finally, I would say that, um, you know, I think that RENA, in the past, RENA has not had a lot of teeth. But, you know, I think that it's, it's good to set a clear objective. Uh, it's good to set clear objective, but unfortunately, I think it's bad to set an objective which is unachievable. I don't think any, even the most progressive, um, policymaking here would have a very hard time achieving these numbers. And, uh, you know, and, and I don't think there's any expectation that it'll be that way, you know, uh, under a more conservative approach where people are looking to limit, limit housing and, and limit the amount of change. Then, you know, it's just, you know, it's very difficult, uh, very difficult to do. I would have preferred to see, I think that, um, in terms of setting objectives, if we had seen the change in balance here, where it was, you know, fifty or sixty percent market rate housing, and the number had come, if the number had come at two thousand or twenty-five hundred, that would have actually been something that definitely could have been achieved here and would have been a much greater goal than, than six thousand, which I think, you know, the problem is everybody has numbers which are much, much higher than they were before. Uh, there is only so much potential for things to be built. And it's, you know, it's, it's kind of a money problem. But at the end of the day, you know, there are only so many, you know, to achieve this kind of number in Cupertino, you have to build pretty tall. There are only so many companies that could do this. This is one of the things that San Jose found. There are very few companies that can afford to build, uh, you know, steel frame building, uh, you know, a high-rise, you know, an eight-story building. And, you know, it's possible you can attract them here, but, you know, it's just, you know, it's, I think it's just very difficult to actually deliver on what you want to attract. So, you know, I probably am more positive on this report than, than most of the rest of you are. But, uh, but I, unfortunately, I feel like, you know, when you, when you set unachievable objectives, then, then what's going to happen, everybody's going to fail. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Feng. Would anyone else like to comment? Commissioner Saxena?
Well, thanks.
Great.
Well, thanks.
Oh, no thanks, okay. Uh, Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, I guess, um, I'll throw in my two cents. Yeah, as, as we went through this, um, you know, with, keeping in mind, the objective is to, create an environment that local municipalities have targets to support projected growth in a region. Um, and are not putting up walls and, um, refusing to develop any housing is really the objective of the, um, RENA allocations. Um, so, you know, to that overall goal, I, I, I support from the standpoint of, I think it is important that, um, we, in the region, try that, um, we in the region try to do, um, what we feel is, is reasonable to support that. However, when, when the numbers do come in so high that, you know, it's just not achievable, um, I definitely agree with Commissioner Feng that, you know, it's like any objective, if it's just you know, you can't do it, then what's the point? What's the point of the objective? It's not a good objective and it does not motivate, it, it de-motivates. And so, um, you know, how, how do we get to a place where there could be something resembling a reasonable number? Probably not an option, um, but, um, definitely at least, um, having that communicated from the standpoint of, um, thanks. Uh, we'll see what happens, um, is kind of the, the, the outcome. You know, because, because we're in a situation where they're just, there's not a lot of, um, projects that could go forward, um, that are large enough to support these numbers. Um, it's all infill. And, you know, from that regard, it's, it's small numbers here and there. And so, um, you know, how, how does that take into account in terms of actual available, developable, developable, um, sites? I mean, we go through the whole site selection and, um, hard to think of sites that'll add up to that, that number. Um, unless they're very, very tall and very, very dense, or you actually go into areas and completely redevelop them. Um, which is not, um, part of our, um, general plan. So, um, it does pose interesting questions from the standpoint of, you know, what is the long term fate for us, for this region, given we've reached a state of completely unaffordable housing, um, for any reasonable new buyer. You've got to have it either, uh, inherited or, um, do very well in a, in a, um, a tech company with an IPO. Or, uh, foreign buyers come in and, and purchase a lot of the properties with, um, you know, where that cost isn't really that significant to them. Um, and I think our schools are, you know, what, what, what is the long term fate of our schools? Well, you know, everybody's all concerned about it. Well, the housing and the affordable housing is a piece of that, and we've been talking about it for quite a while. Um, and so it's really a challenging problem for all of us and, um, we need to look at the big picture in terms of how housing fits with jobs, transit and education, um, for our long term, um, well being. You know, is the current model that we've essentially sustained for the last few decades sustainable in the future? I don't know. And, um, I think good city planning and regional planning is, is really the, the best hope, um, for, um, sustainability. So, anyway. Thanks for listening to me rambling.
Thank you, Commissioner Takahashi. Commissioner Saxena, did you have?
I don't have anything additional to say right now. Uh, I think Commissioner Tata and Commissioner Fang, um, raised those issues very well. Um, I agree with the, the observation that the high, you know, what they call high opportunity area, whatever they call that, uh, that being indexed to the lowest ranch of the BMR housing also doesn't make sense given the nature. So, uh, I think we should distinctly push back against that aspect of this because it's going to worsen the traffic. So we'll have people who will move to Cupertino who won't have jobs in Cupertino, which is exactly against the, the whole idea of reducing traffic and getting people to be able to stay near the homes or near their jobs. Uh, in the beginning I asked, uh, Miss Spielgoers about the number of single family homes. I'm just trying to figure out how could we even accommodate something like that? And it almost feels like, uh, we would have to, uh, literally have big towers to accommodate this unless we change single family zone, uh, uh, zone. Single family home zoning, I'm sorry. So, uh, to me, uh, we're in a no win situation. And we should definitely, uh, push back and get something we can actually achieve. Uh, then have, uh, an arrangement which, if we ever even achieve that, will actually worsen all the elements that you want to improve by building more housing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Saxena. So our, our recommend, recommended action is to recommend whether or not the city council should comment on the Rena methodology or proposed preliminary draft local Rena. And I, I do believe we have a consensus that we do want them to comment. Um, and then on the staff report, pages five through six, there's some items that we could, um, uh, comment on. I mean, we can comment on any of it, but there are some, um, suggestions from staff on this. Uh, and the first one is that the planning commission could request the use of the twenty nineteen households as the baseline. If we're interested in doing that, uh, Pew, I was wondering if you could refresh our memories for what that difference would, uh, create.
Right. So the twenty nineteen, um, baseline, which is the jurisdiction share of the twenty nineteen, total regions twenty nineteen households would reduce the city's, uh, number because, um, as a region Cupertino, it does not necessarily have as many housing units compared to, let's say, San Jose. Similarly, if, if the other, um, alternative that was proposed is used, which is the growth, the rate of growth at which cities would grow between, uh, now and twenty fifty, it would be a much higher resulting number. So that's the two different, the differences between the two alternatives.
Okay, okay. So I personally agree with this, the, um, suggestion that the, that we request the use of the twenty nineteen households as the baseline. Just something in order to get this, this over six thousand units, um, in line with something that's potentially achievable. When we look at even our previous, um, we had a thousand sixty four and looking at Marina and, uh, the Hamptons, they had those allocations. They have yet to build. We're still waiting on those to happen. I, I feel like we, we need to make some suggestions to pull this number into something that is even remotely achievable. And what they have right now is not, um, I'm very concerned that this number of very low income and low income units, uh, will, will not get built. And I believe the Hamptons was like ten percent needed to be affordable there and that hasn't been built. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, this was pre, uh, I can't remember the name of the act that, uh, didn't allow. Yeah.
Yeah, it's pre Palmer.
Yeah, it's pre Palmer. So, you know, there was no requirement for, for, um, BMR units. That was a concession. And in fact, I think the delivered amount was something like six percent in the thirty seven, thirty seven units out of six hundred, right? So, um, five percent.
And so that's, that's really discouraging that they won't build that. It doesn't bode well, uh, for the future. Okay. So the first part was with regards, um, to the A base, uh, uh, number one baseline allocation, uh, the planning commission could request the use of the twenty nineteen households as baseline. And then, uh, I liked the planned Bay Area comments that they had, um, A through, A through C repeating that. And I was curious about this comment at the bottom of page five, while duplex and fourplex development and single family neighborhoods are one solution for meeting the Rena. Such sites, such sites are too small to be considered adequate for lower income housing under existing housing element law. So this was basically saying that even if we do rezone to duplex and fourplexes, we're not going to be able to meet this, uh, two thousand five hundred and fifty one total VLI and lower income units. So we're basically going to be doing, creating moderate and above moderate income if we rezoned all of those portions of the city. Okay. So I think.
Related, related to that with regard to ADUs. You know, I think that, of course, with all the talk about ADUs in the past couple of years here, there is still a limit on the number of square feet you can have based on the, the lot size. So, you know, my personal impression is that any house that's probably been built since the mid eighties was already at the maximum, uh, Flora ratio. And therefore would not be, um, you know, an ADU. It's kind of, it's an interesting thing here whether, uh, you know, I believe now that they could have an ADU even though that would exceed the, the original Flora ratio. I mean, this is something that was different in the most recent. But, but I think the, the, uh, one of the things that's interesting to measure is, I don't know whether this is something that, uh, the city knows. The number of homes which are at their Flora ratio maximum now. Because you would really have to subtract those from the, uh, potential for ADUs. If that number is, you know, thirty percent of the homes in Cupertino, then, then you're not really talking about, you're, you're talking about trying to yield not from twenty two thousand or twenty one thousand, but from, you know, fourteen thousand homes. I suspect it would be very difficult to even, under any circumstances, even, uh, even the, you know, the fairly streamlined conditions that ADUs have now, it's hard to, it's hard to get probably past five percent. Five percent production, no matter what you did.
I'm curious with regards to the, with regards to the ADUs. Do those get counted towards very low and low income? I thought they, uh, did not.
Under the current housing cycle, they're counted towards our moderate income, um, housing limits. Um, the city does have the option, I believe, um, Karen can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but if we did do surveys and establish what the rents were for the ADUs, we could, uh, look at that to determine what income category they would best fit in. And we would have to, uh, have HCD review that and accept that particular, um, breakdown.
There was no, I think it was just, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
That's okay. I was just agreeing with Pew that they can count, but there's limits on how you can count them.
Yeah. I actually objected in the past that, um, that, you know, ADUs, the, the city's policy has been to count ADUs as, as moderate housing units. They're kind of moderate by design, but those are units that don't have, they have no, um, you know, they have no lease restriction. So, um, you know, in effect, they're really market rate units. Whether they count as market rate units or, or, you know, of course, they could have been, they could have been created in a way where they really were BMR units with a, you know, with a lease commitment. I, I, I think we should just clean that, clean that up. But at the end of the day, you know, it's even if you said, you know, you said, okay, we're going to be like Minneapolis and there are twenty one thousand homes, assume that, you know, it's probably eighteen thousand or single family homes, seventeen or eighteen thousand. You say, okay, everybody can have, uh, everybody can build an ADU. You aren't going to get seventeen thousand ADUs out of that. You, you probably, you know, you won't even get seventeen hundred. And, and if there's things like a Flora restriction, which does apply, uh, you know, on lots where the house has been built out to the, to the maximum size, you know, that, if that takes away your ability to build a, a separated ADU, then that even reduces the number more.
Chair, I just want to clarify without going too deep into the ADU discussion, that although EDUs will count towards U F A R, uh, single family homes that are at the maximum are allowed to build ADU less than eight hundred square feet. So there is that opportunity.
Right, right. Um, I do happen to have the, the, uh, a report from the county tax assessor showing single family housing fifteen thousand three hundred and forty three, um, parcels. So I don't know if that means that we can make some inference that the apartments are sitting on the remainder, but that just so you know, we've got fifteen, the fifteen three four three for single family. So if we, if we are in agreement about the first item, uh, which is from the staff report that we would, uh, request the use of the twenty nineteen households as a baseline. If we agree to that, the second item is, uh, the consideration of moderate and above moderate allocations, um, to use transit as a factor for, for those. So I'll just read it out. The planning commission could comment on using different factors and or factor weights. While jobs proximity to transit has been used as a factor in the low and very low income allocations, it has not been considered a factor for moderate and above moderate allocations. Um, and it says this may not advance the state's greenhouse gas reduction, uh, goals. I actually appreciate this, uh, a lot because it creates more equity. I was wondering what the other commissioners thought about it or if Pew would like to further, um, comment on what this means.
If I could jump in before we, before we get into that, I actually disagree with the, um, using the twenty nineteen numbers. Um, they were very clear in the report. The, um, the, uh, report is very clear about trying not to sustain a, an equitable, um, you know, um, allocation of housing. So, you know, I think that the number, the baseline number should be based on, you know, based on future numbers as well, or it should be based on future numbers. But that, you know, you have to decide whether of this nine, nine county area, whether really a forty percent of that population growth is going to happen in Santa Clara County. And I think that that's, seems unlikely. So I, I, I guess I just would look at it differently. I do think that, um, I think there's a problem with the baseline. It's just, um, I don't, I wouldn't support trying to build it off of the current, uh, current population distribution.
Okay. So why don't we, uh, since we have a center on the twenty nineteen baseline, let's see what the other commissioners have to say on, on that first part. And we can just let, let the, uh, let our opinions about that all be stated so they know it by commissioner and, and send it to the, uh, the city council that way. So would the other commissioners like to weigh in on what they think of using the twenty nineteen baseline as a recommendation for city council?
I have a process question. If we don't use the twenty nineteen baseline, where do we get the other baselines? Because we're only being given what A bag's giving us, right? So we basically really have like two choices, right? From what I can tell, like one is like, one is like bottom up methodology, income shift methodology, and then it's based on which baseline, right? I mean, how do, how do we select a baseline? So.
I actually agree. I mean, you, you know, you, you wouldn't say the entire nine, nine county area is going to have identical, um, identical growth in the next, you know, through twenty fifty. That's, that's exactly the sustaining of the, um, current inequity. But at the same time, you know, uh, when you, when you look at, when you look at some of the, uh, kind of, uh, I don't know, there are big cities in there which would be more outlying areas that have, uh, have a significant reduction relative to, you know, areas right here, you know, in, in our particular area. Um, I think that that, there's an inequity there and that's something that really should be looked at.
I just don't know which baseline we would use if we didn't use the baseline. I mean, I'm in agreement with you. I just, I mean, we can't project anything at this moment and that's what's kind of scary to me, right? I mean, and, and I remember sitting in this A bag meeting to like, listening to people like, hey, we need more affordable units on Belvedere Island. I'm like, what the heck? Like, I mean, good luck, guys. I mean, that's, none of this has made sense. I, I would say that they probably had a tough job trying to deal with the cards that they had, but they, they should have changed the game and changed the rules instead of try to deal with a really bad hand. And it's, but what baseline do we use? I mean, just to staff, the question is like, if we don't use twenty nineteen, where, where do we go to?
I think we could ask staff and we could also talk to some other cities nearby in terms of other ideas. Because I think this is a process, uh, we received the first thing and, uh, we need to get it to a level that is realistic. And my sense is many of the neighboring cities are also having same questions. Uh, especially those like Saratoga, which is not, it's a priority five, it's not on any transit route. I think they also got like two hundred, two thousand or something allocated to them. And they also must be wondering how they can accommodate that. And I don't know the ratio of the low, for the low income to middle income to, uh, uh, market rate. But again, uh, I'm not sure how many low income jobs were there in Saratoga or nearby Saratoga. Uh, similarly, so I would suggest we do some more research. We talk to, uh, uh, we make contact with, uh, neighboring cities. And, uh, sort of come back with a plan which actually makes sense and sort of go back to A bag about it.
Okay. So I was wondering, Pew, I believe I heard Friday, November twenty seventh, um, date in, uh, here earlier in the, the meeting, or does city council need to have something sent in by that date?
Um, yes. So there is a city council meeting, uh, already scheduled for this particular item on November seventeenth at five PM. Um, and so the council will be discussing this and deciding what to comment on at that time.
Okay. So it seems to me that we need to wrap it, wrap up this discussion and send. Okay, so it seems to me that we need to wrap it wrap up this discussion and send, you know, we can agree that we we disagree with the baseline that we have. And say that the twenty nineteen. Is is an option that they could consider and suggest that they speak to. But it but we're also not in agreement with it, but we seem to be in agreement that there is an issue with the baseline. And they could speak to the neighboring cities and see. What they have for suggestions and and issues with it, and perhaps they even want to team up and, you know, have a have a group city. You know, letter going out. So I I would like to see this first item if we could come to some agreement beyond. Beyond, you know, first, we we seem to agree that we don't. We agree that we don't agree that their baseline is correct. So they they need a different baseline. We are not in total agreement about using the twenty nineteen baseline. And I personally have a have a take issue with this, you know, where we go from ten sixty four to. Six thousand, two hundred and twenty two. When we just eliminated the the allocations at the Valco site, the office allocation. I don't know where, you know, like you you were saying earlier, the comments about. You you might end up losing sites that which would generate jobs because you're having to put the housing there because of the nature of the city. I think that if that could be articulated to city council, it's really interesting. Kind of a catch twenty two that they've got there. So first part, could we come to some agreement about the baseline allocation statement that we want to send to city council? Anyone wants to, Commissioner Fung, if you would like to. Provide an alternative to the twenty nineteen households as baseline idea, I think that would be great.
Well, I don't know. The statement from the statement from A bag is very clear about why. You know, why there's a differential like that. So I think that the question is really that, you know, I think if you look, if you look at it. You know, there probably needs to be a better justification of how of how that city to city waiting was done in this area.
Okay.
So if we could. I think that they are they are bound by the number of houses that needed to be placed into the Bay Area. They would probably make the same argument, you know, that that, you know, from a state level. You know, is that the right? Is that actually the right number?
You from the state level, you're talking about the four hundred and forty one thousand.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, you know. There was a calculation done there. You know, I think that. You know, in the prior going between the the. See, this is Rena, this is Rena six. So it was between Rena four and Rena five. There's actually a factor in the calculation, which is a a cap. On how much can change from one from one cycle to the next. That cap was pretty low. It's only I think you couldn't have an increase of more than about fifteen or fifteen or eighteen percent. So they completely threw that out. You know, when you when you have a change, you know, six hundred percent change, there's something something is, you know. I I think that that is that is a factor that contributes to being. Unattainable. That may maybe that's a separate point, you know, independent from the things that were highlighted here. You know, the fact that there's not a, there was not a cap. You know, that what was happening here was that the expression of Rena allocations has moved from being a. Let's create encouragement for you to do something to, you know, let's try to reflect what, you know, what I think they're trying to reflect the actual need. And so there's a good argument for that, but the problem is, you know. The city of Cupertino is not larger or really all that different between the two cycles. So so to completely change the calculation is is. It's challenging. Again, it just makes it makes it not possible to to be successful.
Right. I've got a question. Do all the the COGS add up to? Three point five million? Please tell me they don't. If we took the whole state from HCD. Do you would you happen to know what the entire total is?
No, that's not something that we've been tracking.
Okay, I'm kind of curious about that. Okay, so we we do have agreement about questioning the city to city ratio and and the. The the whole A bag total. And how they arrived at that. I I I'm in agreement with that. We still don't have agreement on the baseline, but that can certainly be raised for as three items under item one. And.
I was going to say, like, if it if it goes out there, I mean, the statement would somewhat be like. Whereas the state estimates of regional housing needs determination may have had massive double counting, whereas. The academic, the pandemic has created a change in housing preferences. Whereas we are seeing a net outflow of jobs to other states. Whereas the overall A bag total does not constitute an achievable goal, whereas the job profiles have moved for their work from home. These are reasons for challenging the baseline numbers.
Okay, so if we look at page five of the staff report. Item six, they have timing, double counting, location. Locating growth in the regional transit oriented job rich core, lack of access to transit, E unachievable housing targets. You're adding a couple more onto that essentially.
I am. I just think we need to be clear about where our rationale comes from. And we need to share that information with other cities so that they can take the same lead as ours. To make the case that these numbers are ridiculous, they're not achievable. And someone's smoking some pipe dreams here because it's not working, right? If you want to give us an achievable goal and an achievable strategy, then let's start. Let's start with some better estimates here.
Okay, so the unachievable housing targets, and I I just want to capture the comments that you have, which. Are in addition to what I already listed, the the five. So did you have your items written down? Could you repeat them?
I do. Whereas state estimates of regional housing needs determination may have had massive double counting. That one's already there. Whereas the pandemic has created change in housing preferences. So we see an exodus in certain regions in general. Whereas we're seeing a net outflow of jobs to other states, and I can verify this. I mean, there are. You know, I've talked to enough employers. There are bonuses being sent to people to move out of California at this moment. To Austin or to Boise or to Seattle or to Cary, North Carolina. There are people are paying Bay Area rates if they move now, and but in the next six months, they may be told to go there. Whereas the overall A bag total does not constitute an achievable goal. And whereas job preferences have moved to work from anywhere environment, I would use this as some reasons.
Okay. So I might combine a few of yours. So they do. They do have unachievable housing targets, which is kind of vague, but. And perhaps adding pandemic related changes, including job outflows. And you're saying something about the the work from home, so.
There's a work from home. So given that we've all been working from home, that seems to be the standard for at least the next. Twenty four months. I think that option will be available to many workers.
Okay, and.
And I think it might be standardized in some cases.
Also suggested as a part of the calculation. You know, that they would that as part of the greenhouse gas reduction. That they would they would really start to encourage, hey, you know, our company's going to adopt three days a week, you know, coming in. You know, you work five, but you only come in three. I I would actually, you know, I I kind of agree. I think there's a cluster of things that you you said there, Ray, that that. An area that that I would suggest that that at least be brought up is that there are. So I don't know that I believe that, you know, that the pandemic. Conditions we have today are going to be, you know, a long term thing, but there clearly will be a change. And so I think that's something that does need to be looked at in building the baseline numbers. You know, I I expect that many people will have more of a. They will have more of a a. Non commuting. You know, non commuting job and 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 a non commuting job does allow you to live farther away. So. So I think that that actually is something that that's a very real change. You know, I, you know, I actually, a lot of places. I don't know. I actually had seen a lot of stories of places which are now, you know, VMware and a number of other companies where they're. They're actually adjusting salaries regionally. So if you decide to live in someplace in San Diego, or if you decide to live in Denver. That that you get less pay. And that actually, you know. You you can kind of, sometimes that's written in these stories as a big negative, but I'm not really sure that people look at it that way. They just kind of look at, well. If it costs less to live there and I can work remotely, then I'll consider that. So I I I do believe there'll actually be a change there, and I think. That's something there was no way they could have anticipated this in doing that calculation. But I think that that is something that needs to be looked at now, you know, forward looking. You know, for companies to build hardware and, you know. Since I work for, you know, a company that's building a product, you know, building electric vehicle. There is actually still a very strong. You know, concentration of, you know, you need to come in. I I work in a cloud software group, so I don't go to, I I don't go to work and I, you know, who knows, maybe I'll never go back into the office. But there are many, many, you know, I work very closely with people who are in the labs. There'll continue to be, you know, a lot of labs and a lot of places where people do need to live in the area and come in on a daily basis. So it's very hard to tell how that's all going to shake out. But but I think that that's to to just pretend that that's not a factor is definitely not right.
I would add the other thing is we have talked to a number of commercial real estate brokers. A number of buildings are for sale where headquarters are planning to reduce the size of their headquarters. Or get out of certain regions, and I think those are other factors. It might actually benefit us depending how they calculate jobs to benefit, jobs to housing ratios as well. But but I think you want to move on, Chair. I I think that was your intent. So I I think you have enough items to move forward with, I guess, and I don't know if there's a, you're trying to put in a motion in in place.
Oh, well, okay, so we seem to, we we are copying essentially the the A through E that they have. And we're adding an item on page five, and we're adding item F that we have. Essentially pandemic related changes, including jobs outflow and work from home schedule changes, something like that. That that we're not. They might have been initiated because of the pandemic, but we might become permanent region wide and also that A bag. I don't know that we need to say all this, but A bag was already looking into this as a potential. It sounds like from Commissioner Fung that they were already looking into having that happen.
I would I would just comment that, you know, we don't, I don't think we need to. I don't think as a commission, we need to comment, you know, point by point on what the staff put together. You know, those are inputs. They're they're valuable inputs. I think. I would actually, I would actually say that, you know, one of the points we, one of the points we make is that. We're expressing some question about the baseline. And that one of the biggest areas in the baseline, I think Ray has done a really good job identifying. One of the big areas in the baseline is that the key assumptions that the baseline calculations were built on probably don't hold true. And and it's very difficult to tell how that's going to change, you know, how's that going to change, you know, for eight years from now. But, you know, it's just, it it's definitely a bad assumption. At the outset, as we're doing the planning now. So and that's something that I think. What I would hope that that, you know, what our council would say is, you know, rather than say, hey, you know. We're really concerned about COVID. It needs to be. You know, you need to, that that A bag needs to demonstrate that they're really, you know, that they've investigated this and that they've. Made a statement that makes sense around around, you know, changing, you know, a powerful change in the way that people work. That's at the core of of very much of the allocation. You know, that drives greenhouse gas, that drives, you know, the. You know, the income equity issues.
Okay, so did we do we have some agreement on item two to use trances as a factor for modern and above moderate allocations? We it seemed more equitable.
By the time you apply fifteen percent weighting on it, it doesn't matter very much. And I and I don't, I don't know that I have a problem with the weighting as they presented it. Well, it's actually, I guess, a sixty percent or, you know. In the in the higher income categories.
Okay, well, what we have for our next steps is that the planning commission could recommend that the city council authorize. The mayor or city manager to send a letter to A bag on the city's behalf, reflecting any comments provided by the planning commission with regards to the proposed methodology. It sounds, you know, first that we are in agreement. We have some. Questions about what alternative baseline it should be. And we have already made our comments adding on. Item one C, adding on an item F that regarding the pandemic related changes. So. Would anyone care to make a motion? Do we need to make a motion or just?
Good point. Do we need to make a?
Sure, I don't. I don't think you need a motion here, but we we took a notes and you you did an awesome job summarizing it for us, so we'll incorporate all those to our our draft to to city council.
Okay, and does anyone else on the commission want to make some comments on this? Or have we completed this item? Any further comments?
I think the most important comment is encourage council to talk to other cities to express the same concern so that. Other cities actually have this list if they haven't done this homework as well. To be able to go and and push back on A bag as well. And hopefully give them an out and and a way to save face to say, hey, these risk conditions you could not consider. At the point in time, please come back with better numbers and go back to HCD. Please come back with better numbers.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I I continue to have the issue with the fifteen percent affordable, what we're allowed to ask for, and yet we're. We need to build even more and the lack of funding, if that can be added in there. And and that it's looking significantly higher than expected. So I, we will close. Item two. Okay, thank you. Close item two, and we're moving on to old business. Item three, the subject general plan annual report for the year twenty twenty recommended action that the planning commission provide input. Into the general plan annual report for the city council. We begin with a staff report.
Good evening, Commission. I actually don't really have a presentation per se. We've been going through general plan annual report. As you know, this is done on an annual basis, and the. Commission conducted their first review of it last month. And I, you, as part of your packet, you have the next round of edits that have been made. I just wanted to point out that there have been some, there were some comments from the last meeting. That have already been incorporated in the draft that you see before you tonight, and I have a PDF of the document that we can go through as we had last time as well. So with that, I will bring that up. Can you see my screen?
Yes, Pio, it's perfect. Thank you.
So last time the commission had reviewed through policies LU eighteen dash. Just give me one sec.
And Pio, could you zoom in a tiny bit there?
No, can I restart my screen share so I can move it to my bigger screen? It might make a difference.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Is that any better?
Slightly. There we go. That's better.
So the last meeting, the commission had reviewed all the way through LU dash eighteen point two, actually, strategy LU dash eighteen point two point two. And. Was just beginning to embark on policy LU dash nineteen point one. So. And as I mentioned before, there have been some edits that the commission had wished to make in the prior, in this prior section, and those have been identified and bold. If the commission wishes to go back to those, I'm happy to go over them, or we can just continue to move forward.
I believe we can move forward, and we're on to the. Valco Shopping District Special Area. I I do have one question. If we could move back at the original. The original language was that it was going to be a shopping, dining and. Shopping, dining and retail, I believe, destination, something like that. And did that language change?
I don't believe that we made any changes to that portion.
Okay, and again, we still have the entertainment at thirty percent. Okay, I was just curious with regards to that. And may I ask, was there? And may I ask, was there anything? Out of concern for retail on the Valco Parkway, is there anything that requires there be ground floor retail on the north side of Valco Parkway? My concern being that if, that we have existing ground floor retail on the south side of Valco Parkway and I think it would integrate better if, and, you know, make it more viable if there were ground floor retail on the, on the north side of Valco. The reason why I say this is because when I looked at the SB 35 plan, it didn't have a, a row of, of ground floor retail there. And I was wondering if that was, it had been a requirement.
Well, you might recall that in September 2019, the council amended the general plan and they only limited the residential, the region, the portion of the site to have residential usage, which is about approximately 13 acres of the site to the east of Wolf Road. So anywhere else on the site currently as the general plan stands, which is only zone for regional shopping.
Okay, so would you, with, with regards to the 13, it was like 13.1 acres, is that, is that adjacent to Valco Parkway? Or it is. Okay, so they would need a general plan amendment if they wanted to make it retail on that ground floor. Is that right?
I think the language reads currently limited ground floor commission uses are permitted, but not required in conjunction with residential development.
Okay, so, so it'd be something we want to highly encourage perhaps to make that more vibrant on the ground floor. Okay. Well, is that something that we could put in as in the comments that they might want to look into requiring the ground floor retail there along the north side of Valco Parkway?
Ask another question. Isn't that part of the heart of the city plan too, that you'd have to keep that consistency?
The Valco Park Shopping District is not a part of the heart of the city.
Thank you.
And I believe we had, at the last meeting, the commission had agreed that they would determine whether there's consensus to move forward with such a requirement or whether it would just be an individual commissioners that it would be reflected. So I just wanted to kind of get a sense of, in order to put that in as a comment.
Okay, do, do we have consensus on this comment? We could change the word require to consider requiring. And the, the concern that I have is the shops along 19800 Wolf Road on the north side, the restaurants there. My concern is that if, for instance, they were to have all residential and no shopping on the opposite side of the street, it might not help those businesses there. And so what I'm trying to do is, is create an environment where they are going to be, you know, have a, have a better chance to do well. I, do I have any other, I need to have some consensus on this moving forward. I. So would Vice Chair Wong? He's telling me I need to ask him.
Yeah, I, I can move forward with it. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Commissioner Saxino?
Yes, please.
Okay. Commissioner Takahashi and Commissioner Feng?
I'm with me.
Okay.
So I'm actually, I'm actually opposed to, to putting additional constraints on. There's a, there is a certain level of, you know, if you want to establish a default of what's there, you know, for consideration for a change, but, you know, I don't know. The original plan was, you know, the original objective in, in the Valco zone was a, a complete redevelopment. So I, we continue to prefer that. But that's, you know, we're just, it's a straw poll, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll reflect this then? Okay. Okay, just a quick typo on policy LU 19.2, the, the, yeah. I think we saw it at the same time.
I just got a question just from my reference. I don't know why. I always thought Valco Marketplace Center, however it was equated, was part of Heart of Plan, Heart of the City Plan. When was that taken off or when did that change? I must have missed something. I'm just wanting to make sure, just in case other people like me are falling along and trying to figure out what that, what happened.
It's, it's been.
Sorry, question just asked.
Yeah.
It's been separate since 2014 or more?
2005, but.
It's in the 2014 Heart of the City Plan that has that included in there. Maybe that's why, I, I'm going to track it down at some point, but I, that's what I remember reading. That it was, it included that. And I didn't know if something changed. Sorry. But that's why I'm kind of stuck on that.
I mean, Steph can cover that, but I think that that actually is the main street area that you're, that was part of Heart of the City.
Was a Valco Marketplace Center was Main Street?
I don't know. The, the old.
I'm here it is.
Was homes, right? So.
I'm looking on page 13 of just streetscape design, just other things. Maybe I'm missing something, so I guess I'll figure it out. Thank you, though.
The streetscape funded improvement was required along Stevens Street Boulevard, but the area itself is its own thing.
Got it. Okay.
Is, is this specific plan? Yeah, the specific plan is still here. Create a Valco Shopping District specific plan prior to any development. So that seems to me to read that we need to go through another specific plan process. Based on these general plan allocations, this would be the starting point? Is that correct?
Correct. If there is a desire to, if, if the property owner desires to redevelop the portions of the site that have the regional shopping designation.
Okay. Okay, but you're saying if they desire to rebuild the site with the regional shopping designation. So that doesn't. Okay, so what happens if they want to build something different from having the 13 acres of residential? And then you've got the commercial portion. What if they wanted to do something different from that? What happens? What's that process?
It would need a general plan amendment.
Okay. And is it all right if they do the general plan amendment concurrent? Or do they need to? I mean, is it going to, would it go through a general plan amendment process like all the other ones? I mean, it was kind of, it was kind of a different process last time because I believe it was the city doing its own general plan amendment. And then this, if they were to ask for an amendment this time, it would be a little bit different.
Current within project, but that's, it just depends on council authorizing a general plan amendment.
Okay.
If the owner wishes to pursue one.
Okay, so it could go kind of like how Westport did. Originally, they, they came in for a general plan amendment, city council denied it, and then they decided they would work with what was actually in the general plan, but it sounds like, it sounds like they would need a general plan amendment to do a lot, something different.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's nothing, actually to clarify, there's nothing that prevents the city from establishing a specific plan for the area independent of, you know, independent of a proposal. And there was also nothing that prevents, you know, a, a specific plan to come forward as part of a proposal. You know, I, I, I think that that's blurred because, because part of what the general plan called for in this case was for consolidation and a full redevelopment plan, something that you couldn't do, you know. It would have been, I think it would have been very difficult for, for the city or just said, well, this is what we want to have here. Independent of any, of any, you know, anybody owning all the land and, you know, and coming forward with a plan.
Okay, so how, what would it look like if the city, just curious, if the city were to come up with a plan for this site? How does that, that would just be city council?
It would look like the Valco specific plan, wouldn't it? I mean, that's exactly the process, right? You know, have a community process that determines what you want to do there, independent of what the, of what the owner or the developer, you know, would want to do. And, and then, and then they can do that or not do that.
Well, before you do that, a, a city council will have to identify that as a, a city will program item. So once that's identified, then that, that starts a path of down to where Commissioner Feng is discussing.
Right. Okay. And then at some point, there, there probably would have needed to be or would need to be a discussion about having concurrent plans in motion in the city.
Yes, there will be all kinds of discussions as well as funding sources for, for a city plan.
Okay, do, are there any comments on this page while we're, while we're looking at this? I have a question regarding the, the trail on the 280. And, and my question is because we have the Unipro Sarah Trail, which is to be renamed at some point in the, in the, I don't know, in the works. I was wondering if we should mention that. So it's item LU 19.3.4. The project should also contribute towards a study and improvements to a potential interstate 280 trail along the drainage channel south of the freeway. Is that, is the Unipro Sarah Trail, which already I believe had some funding provided for it and it's in some preliminary stages. Could we mention that? That the, the? Yeah, so I think they could probably, probably not the study portion, but the improvements portion would still remain.
I, I would actually recommend on this one, it's very specific to what had been envisioned in the past. So I would actually strike the section with regard to the thing that we call the Unipro Sarah Trail today. You know, that, that's actually separate from the, from the rest of the body of that.
It almost sounds like you wanted to almost add an LU 19.3.4.1 and break off the, the the Unipro Sarah Trail into that?
No, I, I would just take it out. I mean, I think.
Don't even mention it?
Yeah.
Well, no, I wouldn't. The reason why is because it talks about the improvements portion, which sounds like they're trying to provide, get funding provided for that portion of the trail from the developer of the Valco Shopping District, and I wouldn't remove that. But, but.
I don't think it's going to happen. I mean, frankly, I don't think it's going to happen, right? I mean, somebody else offered to pay for it, that would be a violation. You know, you don't want to, if Apple says, hey, you know, we're kicking in, we're kicking in eight million bucks and we'll build this trail. You don't want to then say, well, the general plan forbids you from doing that because you're not the Valco property owner. It, it doesn't matter.
The project should though, it should also contribute. It's not will. So you, I would, I would not remove it because you don't know what's going to happen. And also we're changing the general plan if we're, for, for removing it entirely. My point is that the study has already been begun.
If I might, there are also pedestrian easements and other things that would be required of this property. This is very healthy, this inland property and general plan is a, you know, through 2030, so 2040, so. It's, it's not always accurate at every point in time moving forward. So this is just like taking a long view on it. But I'd like to add any comments that you wish to add in the comment section.
I think the, the statement that you have is, is fair and I'm afraid to change any of the rest of it.
I think it's important to keep the stated intention of, of the trails and the path and what's there. So I, I would support that.
Should I move on to the next bit?
I'm, yeah, I'm all set. Everyone good? Okay. Yes, thank you.
Well, please note that I, that I think that that should be stricken in the comments. You know, the trail land is not part of the, is not part of this zone. The, you know, the obligation, whether you want to build a trail or there or not is something that you don't know. There's, there's a lot of reasons. I see why it's there. Why it was there historically. I just, you know, if you're going to, you know, if we, if we're trying to, if we're trying to improve this and make it less ambiguous, then I would remove that. If we're feeling like we have to preserve everything that's here, then I'm not, it's not clear why we're going through this exercise.
Good question.
I think this one in particular, you know, the in-depth discussion about alternatives to what might happen at Valco are particularly moot. So.
I'm inclined to leave as is, so people understood what it was like pre SB 35.
Well, that, that, this could dissolve into a long discussion because this has already been altered from what was originally there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we can have a, we can have a discussion around the validity of that alteration as well, but, but I, I'm not planning, I'm not planning to bring it up. I mean, you know.
You want to be here till midnight? Come on.
We put a two-hour limit on ourselves.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Oh, yeah, we did.
All right. Can we go to North Valco?
All right. I'm not looking at that. Yeah. So, right, right. North Valco Special Area. And just to remind us where North Valco Park. Are we just looking at the Hamptons or are we all the way up to Cupertino Village?
I think it's 99 Ranch, doesn't it?
Ranch 99, yeah.
Includes everything on both sides of Wolf Road, north of 280, all the way through the city of Santa Clara on the east and to the side of it to the north and to the, to the west as well.
Okay. Okay, I'm set through LU 20.2. And if anyone would like, has any comments? Anyone have any comments on the bottom of this page? Are we good? No comments, we can move on?
No comments.
Okay, so for policy LU 20.6, I've, you know, never quite understood what this, um, uh, the buffer development, provide, this is, this part, the provide building transitions, setbacks and/or landscaping to buffer development from adjoining single-family residential uses. I've always wondered what this, these building transitions actually mean in practice, if, if we were to look at that as an objective standard. So if you have a six-story building, we don't seem to be requiring, uh, stepping down of the building as it gets to the single-family residential.
Um, that is already incorporated in many of the city's plans, which is the heart of the city, where you have to have a one and a half to one and a half inch transition between buildings and, uh, single fam, adjacent single-family homes. Uh, we do have similar building setbacks in several of our conceptual zoning plans as well, which includes North Deansa, South Sunnyvale, Saratoga Sunnyvale Plan as well. They all have certain setbacks and setbacks that are built into those plans. There are only some portions of the city where these don't exist. And these are on the east side of the, uh, old Apple campus, the Infinite Loop Campus, along, I believe it's Randy Lane, I think. Also, in, uh, I think some portions of maybe the Homestead area. So in most other areas, there are transitions built into the plans already, but, um-
This one?
I'm sorry, uh, in, in here, we actually don't have really very many single-family uses. We only, uh, North Valco specifically, the single-family uses are in the city of Sunnyvale, and they're separated from the properties in Cupertino by, um, Lynette Lane, which is a, I believe it's a 60-foot right away that separates, the single-family homes from the closest, uh, developable property, I think, if you know.
Okay. Thank you. So we're now looking at the North Danza Special Area. Right, and we already caught that there was some parts that needed to be looked at more closely, and I see you've got that on the, on, uh, expected to be completed by summer 2021.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, any comments on this page, or can we move on?
So, so I'll ask about, uh, LU 21.2. I don't know whether people feel that's overly prescriptive. You know, limited commercial and residential. I don't know whether that's worthy of a comment or not. Um, I think it probably is looking forward. I mean, this is reflective of the way it's been. It's certainly reflective of the way it's been. But, but this would be a limit. If somebody said, if somebody said, I'd like to build a, you know, I'd like to build a building with some retail, I'd like to build a, a re, you know, retail floor underneath housing, kind of in the middle of an office area, you know, I think that, um, this would, this would cause that to be difficult, and I'm not sure that you want to.
Okay, you're saying that it's overly prescriptive, but it's saying primarily office and research and development uses supplemented with limited commercial and residential uses. So it looks like they can have a bit of a mixture there, and they're, they're not really nailing anything down. We would need to look at LU 2 for the residential densities, um, there. So you were looking to have office with re, ground floor retail?
You could have, so I would just say that rather than saying what you can build here is office, uh, you know, I think that, that it would be better, you know, that'd be, if you were looking forward, you would say, this would be an area at which, for instance, you know, when you go look at the, um, when you go look at LU 2, you, that would, this would be a candidate for an area where you would want to increase the residential density that's allowed. Uh, this would be an area in the next arena, in the next housing element, where you would probably want to, uh, have an allocation. You know, have this be potentially be an area where there's an allocation of, of housing. Again, that, just not, that's a, that's a different statement than where, where that is today.
Okay.
And I think it's worthy of a comment, you know, I wouldn't, you know, it, it's a bigger thing to change that. There's a lot of people who are gonna want to weigh in if you say, okay, you know, that I want to develop this differently than it's, that's been stated.
Okay, so I think I, it might be out of the scope of what we're doing now to target that, or put an asterisk on it as being potential for, um, housing element site, or being, uh, primarily retail. I mean, residential, um, so I'm concerned about making a note-
I'm just offering that, I'm offering that as a comment, because the next time this exercise, the next time the county, the planning commission goes through this exercise, you'll, you know, there'll be, the council will deeply be involved in trying to decide where, um, housing allocation would be, so I would just say, this part looks kind of outdated. You know, and that would-
I don't think it's outdated.
No more than, no more than just to say, this is an area for, for greater deal of consideration, reconsideration than, you know, than the, than the one before to the one after it.
I, I, I'm reluctant to alter the, the general plan, uh, in this way. I think that's beyond the scope of what we're supposed to be doing. But if you want to have your comment put in there, uh-
Well, then, then let's please do that. I, I guess the part of the question is, you know, what is, what is the objective that we're trying to achieve here? And if the objective is to identify areas that are worthy of reexamination, it doesn't mean that specific action, one way or the other. But to identify the areas where you want to look, I think I would actually raise this one, would be an example of, there was a plan, there was a plan 20 years ago, that's, that's clearly, um, being stated here, and that may not be the plan in the future. I wouldn't change, for instance, I wouldn't change the one, um, the, the next one. Uh, I, I don't think there's any reason to change that, and, and changing the use doesn't necessarily make it incompatible. So, that, that's all. I mean, you know, if there are however many, however many hundred, you know, 700 things here, 700 specific lines to, to think about, this is one that I would change sooner than most of the others.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to paraphrase, and I'm still waiting. This is just a placeholder.
I would just say that, I would actually just say for a different balance of land use is sufficient.
Okay, so kind of going back to our instructions, that it is, it is perfectly fine to be putting down, and we should be identifying future work program items. So I think that within what we're charged to do, that's, that's good.
Um, there will probably be a whole slew of, you know, planning menus or zoning menus that will accompany the future housing moment that is gonna come through. So this is probably be one of many.
Right. Right, especially if we can't get them to budge on the 6222 number. We are, we've got our work cut out for us.
Yeah, you aren't gonna, you aren't gonna make much headway. You know, if you pick, if you pull up the list of things that were examined and rejected as housing element, um, sites in the previous cycle, you know, you can decide to do something at Homestead Lanes, but the impact of that will be much lower than if you did something here where you said North Deans is special area. We'll be relaxed to not be, you know, an office park. That's all I'm saying.
Should I move to the next page?
Um, yes, please. Okay. I was wondering, Pew, if you could pull up the map real quick, the LU 2, and let's get a look, because we're looking at North Danza, South Danza, and Homestead Lanes, just so we can keep those all straight. Okay, thank you.
Just, just so I have some, the South Deans, uh, that very, very last strip, like, that's not, that's disconnected. What street is that? The very, very end of the South Deans Special Area? Is that like Bolinger?
Uh, yes, South Deans comprises of two different portions. There is, you can see my screen where the map is. There's this yellow part at the top, and there's a little-
That's like Yamaguchi's, all the way down to like, uh, Kikusushi.
Correct.
And the 76 Valero, the Valero Station there. Okay, got it. Okay, just wanna make sure.
Actually, I think it's also safe to say, isn't the south boundary of that the sign that Ray's background is? And that's right around there, right?
I don't know, do we standardize on signs, or this one's different?
No, it's just that, that particular sign is, is right at the, you know, is right at one of those junctions. That one might be a little bit north of it, but-
Yeah, every time we do these general plan things, I, I drive around the city on a Saturday just to make sure I understand where I am. Always discover something new.
I guess I could say I would make the same comment on LU 22.2, uh, just to consider, you know, consider, you know, to take a fresh look at it, but that doesn't necessarily mean it would change. You know, obviously, across the street and adjacent to these, this is a, you know, it's the San Jose Deans at Urban Village, and they're, you know, they're definitely, clearly definite, different uses. You know, even now popping up, you know, there are a couple hotels that people are aware of. There's a, uh, retirement, uh, kind of a assisted living community that's happening where the Pancake House used to be. So, you know, it may make sense, uh, may make sense to revisit what things are done.
Oh, definitely. Plus the scale of what they're building there, uh, to, yeah, be, uh, have some balance. But to that, interestingly, with, uh, with regards to the school enrollment, uh, I think when you're getting down towards, uh, prospect on the west side, uh, that's a, that's an interesting area. Uh, I, I missed the comment that got placed, um, for LU 22.2. What was that? Consider changing the lab, yes. Yep, yes. And then, when we do that, so this would be an area where I would be getting more concerned about the building transitions and to buffer development from adjoining single-family residential unit, uses. So moving forward, that, those objective standards, we'd want to be sensitive to?
There are already existing stand, objective standards with regard to buffering in this area, but, you know, again, with the, um, new housing element updates, that might be something we may have to reevaluate what those existing plans allow.
Okay, great. So we're moving on to Homestead Special Area?
That'd be great.
So when they say primarily, this is LU 23.2, what does this mean? Primarily retail, commercial, and residential uses, with some limited quasi-public use? So this is saying, um, no office?
Correct, and that's what's borne through with the, uh, development allocations that the council has adopted.
Okay, and I believe we've seen quasi-public before. What is quasi-public use?
Quasi-public use, uh, I, I believe there, there's an old fellows, um-
There's a lodge there.
Yeah, there's a lodge there on the north side of Homestead, um, next to the old department of Forge Complex. Um, there's also, I believe, uh, a building on the east side of Homestead, and I think it's the Delaware Club. Um, so those are zoned for, uh, BQ uses. There's also the, there are a couple churches in that, in the Homestead Special Area. Those are also zoned quasi-public. Okay.
Is the historical building there too? Like, the historic, the museum, I think?
Um, maybe, right, but I don't believe we have a historic, uh, designated building per our general plan in that area. I do not believe so, but I'm-
Okay, maybe the Histori, History Society or something is there. I can't remember, some building, it's up on that side. Check it out.
Yeah, actually, I thought that designation was there. There are a number of churches in that area. That would actually be a common quasi-public um, throughout the, throughout the general plan. That's often the way that's referred to for churches and, uh, things like, things of that nature.
And the general plan defines what quasi-public is as well.
I have nothing to add to Homestead.
Correct. Um, may we move on to the next page? So Commissioner Fung, was the Bub Road Special Area an area that, um, you would be interested in uh, more residential uses in that?
I, I certainly wouldn't have a problem with that. Uh, again, I would say, you know, this is, the Bub Special Area is very narrow, so it has the, you know, there are, there are a number of challenges around it, but, you know, again, I would look at probably any area and say, you know, um, often there's an expression here of traditionally what's been there, and I would just say, you know, that should be something that's looked at, even if the outcome of that is just to say, well, you know, we decided to keep it the same way. I think the Bub Special Area has traditionally been the industrial zoned area of Cupertino.
Right, and this gets into, you know, some of our issues that we were having previously, uh, regards to putting, having such high A-bag numbers and that catch-22 about if you make this retail, you reduce the number, I'm not retail, if you make it residential, you reduce the number of jobs that could potentially be generated from that area, uh, and you, you might not need as much residential in order to accommodate it. But there, there are, there was, has been some interest in potentially making this a downtown area with some, uh, commercial retail. I don't know if the feasibility is, is there, uh, but with ground floor retail or restaurants and upper floor residential.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that happening if, if, you know, there should just be a public discussion about it and, and it, and potentially could move forward. I think the chances of it actually happening are very low, you know, and, uh, I think a premise of, a premise of the, of the discussion has been that, I don't know, in the economic development context, it's often discussed as a, uh, cities will often talk about in, industrial areas with old buildings, you know, can get renovated into new things. The problem in this area on Bub Road, the problem is that most of those buildings belong to Apple. They're not old inside. Uh, they're just not as big, you know, they're just not, they have old outside shelves and they're not big buildings. If you allow this, if you allow, if you allow Apple to have larger buildings, that they would certainly do that. If I were a, if I were a, uh, you know, landlord, I would be happy to have, you know, the largest company in the world, you know, being my tenant, and I probably wouldn't be in any particular hurry to, to rebuild. I mean, I, I think that's just the reality of that area, but, yeah, if somebody, if, 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 if you make it possible, you know, that the, the office space may be redone, the, the residential space, you know, the residential space could come, I, I don't doubt that people would, you know, be happy to do it.
And then there is the loss of having the, the light industrial that you have there. And then there is the loss of having the, the light industrial that you have there. So you, you would lose the potential of having some medical device company, or something like that, be in that area. So, yeah, you're right, it would need public hearings and a whole lot of discussion, which sounds like that's going to be coming.
I mean, I, I have no problem with, I have no problem with that, although I, I don't think this one didn't strike me as being as restrictive as the other ones did. So.
Are there any further comments on the Bub Road Special Area?
If I may just get clarification, should I post this comment or not?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay, so are we moving on? Yes, we are. Mana Vista Village.
So Mana Vista Village, that's the stuff west of Bub, right?
Correct, and on the map.
Looking around the post office, aren't we?
Correct.
It includes like the, I don't know, Thai Bangkok restaurant, all the way down to the 7-Eleven.
It actually includes the area behind that as well, yeah.
It includes the
Behind that as well, with the office buildings, yep, yep, good.
There's some office buildings, there's some big, some big residential buildings. There's a lot of small auto shops somehow, which is kind of interesting.
Yeah, the transmission repair, the, yeah, 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 the European auto thing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, Pew, are you pointing at it?
Yes, it's everything that's shown, outlined in brown here, so it does include the neighborhood that's back there, which is part of the Mana Vista Village. However, there is a very small portion that is the Mana Vista Design Guidelines, where that's applicable with regard to the mixed-use development and all that, all that.
So where's the leader that's pointing to this?
Oh, no, so the leaders here are only for the gateways and the nodes, and so this is right here, this is
Oh, it's in the, okay, it's in the legend. Got it. So we have up to 15 units per acre, 30 feet. Okay.
Commissioner Fung, if, this is probably the area incorporated into Cupertino from Santa Clara County?
Correct, a lot of it is, yes.
In the 80s, I think, is that right?
All the way through 2004.
Yeah.
2004, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's why, that there are a number of restrictions, like architectural restrictions here, that don't exist elsewhere in town. I think those just carried over from, you know, I don't know whether that was in, before or not.
Actually, those architectural restrictions were established by Cupertino, where the Mana Vista Design Guidelines are.
To build a New England fishing village?
Queen Anne's style, yes.
No, but you, you could preserve, it was preserve, right? I mean, it's, it's preserving this area. I mean, this is, this was like that farming, there was a farming community from the 1800s, right? I mean, that's where all the center of activity was, if I remember. You'll, you'll find this general plan.
There was a railroad station there, yes.
Yeah, it was a railroad station, that's what it was.
Actually, I would actually comment here that, you know, one of the things that's difficult about the Bub Special Area is it's very narrow. There actually have been, there's a, there's a large house, kind of residential building, that's what, that's what a lot of Bub backs up to. And that's actually a very good example of that transition from, you know, transition from kind of built space into, you know, into residential areas. You know, the, what you do is, you know, you may, you may have an area that is a downtown, and the thing that's adjacent to that is an R3 zone, where you have slightly bigger buildings, a little bit more density, and then that tapers off, and that's actually a very effective buffer to the small homes that are, you know, to the, well, I don't know, none of the homes in in Mana Vista are small anymore, you know, but, you know, that does, that, I think that was a very effective, effective placement. I'm sure there was a lot of argument about, about whether to allow that apartment building, you know, that, the big apartment building there.
Should I move to the next page?
Okay.
So can we move down to other non-residential mixed-use special areas? Ready to do that? I have some concern at the bottom on policy LU 27.1. And my concern, it's saying ensure that new developments within and adjacent to residential neighborhoods is compatible with neighborhood character. And I can think of some of the urban villages from San Jose, which are adjacent to Cupertino, where they aren't compatible with the neighborhood character. For instance, the 94, no, 95-foot-tall hotel at the corner of Stern, Stevens Creek Boulevard, is, is not really in keeping with the single-family homes which are near it. And they've also zoned the, the 7-Eleven. I think it was 45 feet, but it could have gone even taller, but my main, my main concern is that 95-foot-tall hotel would be pretty noticeable for the surrounding homes. So I don't, I, I don't know what, when it, when it's, in a different jurisdiction, I, what, from our experience, we haven't had a lot of say about what they're doing. So when they redevelop Bollinger, Bollinger and Miller, the Safeway Shopping Center there, I hope that we have some influence over what goes in there. They do have their own adjacent condominiums, which are, you know, two and three-story, it looks like, adjacent to that, but that's, they're in San Jose. But across the street, you're looking at the Eichler Neighborhood, and those are almost all single-story even, so if there's, I don't, I, I wish there was some way that we could negotiate when they go to redevelop that area. I, I found that San Jose on Danza has been pretty responsible about having good transitions to the surround, the surrounding homes there. But we seem on the east side of Cupertino to so far not see that kind of effort being made. So hopefully, I'm really worried about that Bollinger, because that Bollinger project, it is in a, in kind of an urban village horizon. So I'm very concerned what they're going to do there.
I will have to defer to the city attorney on whether we can have language that kind of influences development in other jurisdictions.
I'm, I, yeah, good luck. Yeah, I think all we've been able to do is write a stern letter and, and hope that they would listen to us.
And then we built an 80-foot hotel right next to Sunnyvale, right?
Well, not, not, not
It's not on the border. It's, it's not sitting on the border, like, looking and peering over to their edge at the very entrance of their gateway. It's at least 50 to 100 feet in, so, and it's sitting next to a major freeway.
Right, and our own
Stevens Creek is, as well.
However, our own residents did not complain about that, that hotel. I would take that as being some statement about it. I have to say, it's a very good-looking hotel.
Come on, David, you're not going to get a drink at the rooftop, so.
You, you know, I don't know. There's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of discussion about things being tall, when they, when the plan didn't call for that, and that's an example of one where, you know, there's a 45-foot height limit there, and, you know, when it came to approval, partly because it's at the edge of town, yeah, I agree, it's a little bit different, right? It would be different if the hotel at Stern were across the street. Yeah, I, I under, I got, I got that, I mean, I understand that, but, but it's not that different.
Well, that, that hotel also, they, I believe they they had like 50% of the parking that was needed, and it's on a, it's on a gas station lot, so we can all visualize this, that, the dimensions of it. So it ends up having a certain shape. I think they, they pushed the boundaries of, of good, good design there. But we've moved off the
Yeah, I think you, I, I, I think we're probably getting off the topic. I don't think you think the Goodyear, the Goodyear site is not actually a whole lot larger than that, right? I don't, is it more than an acre? I don't think so.
No, but the gas station isn't an acre for the 76, so.
Most of those gas stations are about 0.8 acre, so, you know, virtually the same.
Yeah.
Virtually the same. It, it is just, you know, the hotel that's being built, there's a, there used to be a, not Sharon Williams, the Kelly Moore store. They moved across the street into old granite rock and the old Bowers Lumber building, but the place where Kelly Moore is now, that's a hotel. This is in the South Danza Urban Village on
South Danza, and then across, what's that, across the street where the La Yang was? Is that a CVS or something, or?
I don't know what that, that one is, but, but the hotel is actually, I don't know, it's funny, they, they, that's a four, four-story hotel. It's not like a giant, gigantic building.
Okay, and that's, that's the point that I'm making about Danza. I don't, not that I understand, but they seem, San Jose seems to accommodate the neighborhood better on South Danza than they, than they had been doing over on the, the east part of Cupertino.
So I think it's, I think that's that one site that was the issue here.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Can I ask a question to Pew on staff? Like, how far did you get to on edits? So how far are we trying to get to today? When did you stop?
I think 27.4 might be the last, to get back, 20, 30.2, I think, will be the last one.
Okay, all right, good, just
I think we're done on neighborhoods. I think we, we went far out of bounds as well. Can we move off of neighborhoods, or do we have more to say?
I have a very general question about neighborhoods, it's something which I've been wanting to ask for some time. If this is not the right time, or if you want to defer it, let's do it. But let's suppose we do decide that SB 120 comes, and all single-family homes can be second-edited duplexes. So would the existing, you know, the covered area to, to floor area, floor area to the total lot area and other restrictions continue to apply, or will it be like an SB 35 kind of a thing?
Unless, yeah, unless the law has anything regarding lot coverage and floor area, the current standards would conclude that I would be my first gut feel, but then we'd have to look at what the law determine compatibility.
Yeah, so, like, I just wanted to bring it up, that let's make sure that our guidelines and accord will cover that explicitly, and it's just not restricted to single-family homes. But if it becomes a duplex or a triplex, it at least provides some reasonable guidelines on what the total, so that the local feel doesn't become completely different.
Yeah, and I would like to add something, like, I think we're missing something on parking to make sure that we have enough parking spots or spaces for the, the number of residents that are there. I would assume there's somewhere in our, in our, like, in the general plan that would at least state that there should be enough parking spaces somewhere. I mean, this war on the car has been gone over too far, and I think we need to bring some balance.
I believe I believe parking is in the municipal
That is correct.
Parking requirements, right.
It's in CMC, but I don't see it in this document. Does it need to be in both?
Does not need to be in the general plan. Parking is a very, it's a much smaller concern than, but that is entirely up to the planning commission and the council, so if it does wish to have a policy around it, certainly could.
I think the fundamental concern I have is when these, you know, these big laws from Sacramento come down, which they're coming down, like, what are the, like, how do we make sure that we comply with them in spirit, but make sure that the overall character and look and feel of the city and its neighborhood doesn't dramatically change? And so that's something, I don't know where it fits in, I'm sure it's somewhere in the neighborhood, but I wanted to bring that up, so that we at least think about it, and we don't get a blind side rate as we did with the Walgreens SB 35. So, that would be my suggestion to the staff, to sort of think about it also.
Is there a way to add that into one of the strategies?
I mean, one way to, to kind of, and this, these are just thoughts that kind of run through my mind, is, you know, having some sort of a missing middle zoning of sorts, which kind of addresses this issue where their law is coming on from Sacramento about duplexes and triplexes. We do have zoning and zoning standards for duplexes and triplexes, and duplexes aren't necessarily much different than single-family homes in size and, and form.
Yeah, but will, will the, will the guidelines we have for the multifamily zones, will they automatically transfer over to the single-family zones if the change or except payment exemption and so, nothing applies, that there is no restriction?
We'll have to, and we'll have to evaluate that, what, if and when that law passes, because they, they change right up until the last minute. So when that happens, that evaluation will have to take place at that time.
So like, I mean, even some language is saying that, which affirms the fact that current multifamily thing, rules for what we already have in Cupertino will apply, unless something, we make it more specific for the, you know, for, for the converted zones. So that's something I wanted the staff to think about, to make sure that we at least have a certain broad guideline in place of what can happen and what can't happen because of that.
I, if the commission wishes, we can add a comment to that, to that, you know, point.
That's all I wanted to bring up, and that's it. Because I remember SB 120 didn't pass because of some procedural thing, even though it got approved in both the Senate, the states, and in the state house. So I'm pretty sure it's coming down when the, that the legislature meets again. And we probably need to make sure that we are in a position to comply with it in a manner which makes everybody happy.
Right, the problem with that one, with 1120, if I recall correctly, is that they were down to about three minutes left, and there was actually some minor amendment to it, which meant it needed to go back for approval, and they, the clock ran out.
Yeah, it was a reconciliation, they needed to reconcile, although there are some people who believe that the clock was deliberately run out, because they wanted to vote for it, but not really make it pass. But, like, above my, my level as a politician, but like, it's, that was one of the things we heard on Twitter, that the vote was done just to please the constituents, that they naturally make it pass. But, you know, the next time we come around, maybe they will pass it.
Well, curiously, they're looking at San Jose to have essential rezoning across the city. Perhaps staff has looked into that a little bit more, to see what they're, what they're proposing, but it looks like some very significant changes are coming there, which is
They're only preliminarily looking at that, and honestly, I've only read one newspaper article on it, so that's the extent of my knowledge on that. But it is my understanding that they're looking to amend their zoning to allow densification of the single-family lots within the next couple of years. To allow, I believe it's up to fourplexes, I think, within the neighborhoods.
Okay.
They're, they're proposing to bring an, an actual zoning ordinance in the, in the near, well, midterm future, one to two years. But San Jose also has to potentially accommodate 65,000 housing units by the current projections.
Okay. Okay. Wow.
Okay, so I propose some language for that comment, and I'm not sure if this is what you wish, or if you want amendments to it, I'm happy to.
Do you read that out? Because I'm finding it hard to read. Okay, add, as I was reading, add some language to address possible future laws Regarding densification of single-family laws to determine which regulations For farm and massing would apply. Yeah, I think that that captures what we are trying to say.
Okay, so one of my concerns with regards to having these multiplexes happen on lots, uh, Going back to SB eleven twenty is that they were allowing a lot as small as twenty four hundred square feet to be divided in two. So you'd have two Twelve hundred square foot lots, and I personally felt that that was that was too small. Um, so I I if you could elaborate here and say, consider lot size minimum, something like that, I would appreciate it.
Uh, my understanding of state law was to allow splits of up to twenty five hundred square foot lots. So Minimum lot size would be five thousand, you know, that would be allowed to twenty five hundred square foot.
Okay, so perhaps the version changed from when I saw it, Which but so that the point would still be the same, you know, do we want to say ten thousand square foot lots can be divided? Um, and something like that, you know, that we That that we have some public hearing and consideration of what lot size minimum were, we would be comfortable with having, um, Be subdivided. So just consider lot size, something like that.
Okay, we would just have to comply with state law. I just wanted to put that blind point on it.
Okay. Right, they could come down and say something that's a lot A lot more lenient than what we would actually like to see. So if we say we don't want it smaller than three thousand square feet Per lot, they'll they can override us.
Right. And and we already have currently in our zoning, we already have minimum lot sizes by zoning.
Right, right. A quick question about the Eichler neighborhood. Those are suggestions, the R one E zoning.
So there are two, um, two categories in there. One is the design requirements. Those are the zoning standards, and then there are the design guidelines, Which are the recommended actions or recommended, um, Features that should be incorporated. And then we also have a design guideline booklet, which is for the Fair Grove Eichler neighborhood, Which are further expanded upon in that booklet.
Okay. But since that neighbor the neighborhood's not protected, State law, like in SB eleven twenty, it was my understanding that it could, um, Basically, you you could subdivide and end up with things that were quite different from what were Being built by city standards.
I'm I'm not sure if there are any exemptions for special neighborhoods or anything like that written into state law, but we'd have to Either develop new standards for the Eichlers or or those particular neighborhoods. But, um,
Oh, okay.
We'd have to see how our zoning code matches up with state law.
Okay.
We do we stop at thirty point two? Is that what you said before?
Yes.
Okay.
Should I move to the next page?
Uh, I just can, uh, reading provision of outdoor areas. Did we have anything In here about community gardens and having them dispersed across the city? Is there some part of the general plan which Has that and also, okay?
I believe it isn't us to stand on.
Okay, okay. And then and then we could, at that point, add in the potential for having new multi Uh, new, uh, multi-residential developments to have A community garden element added in there, perhaps. It can be just noted that it could go on a work plan. My concern is that people living in apartments might not have access to community gardens, and if we can add that into An actual requirement that a certain amount of their landscaping be available for the residents To have a community garden. How would how would we put that into a a general plan comment?
Um, I I think it's probably best to hold it until that point, and maybe I suggest some language that's More specific to multifamily development Within community gardens.
Okay, great. Okay. Can we move on to the next page?
So just for reference, uh, what page are we on? Is it like page?
Twenty seven.
Or HE one point three point two, is that where we are?
Uh, we're still in the land use settlement.
The page before that.
Page for that, cut it, okay.
Does Oak Valley include the forum?
Uh, in terms of the neighborhood, yes.
Okay.
Makes you wonder what the history was when they drew that line. It's kind of an interesting. Actually, it's just a, there's a kind of like a townhouse Complex in Creston Farlow. Just curious, is is that ours? Or is that is that is that in Creston Farlow?
Are you talking about the new construction?
Yeah, on Foothill.
Um, so there's a new apartment complex, it's a fifteen year apartment complex currently under development Over, uh, on North Hotel, and that's in Cupertino.
That is Cupertino. Okay, got it.
That came through, I don't know, four years ago, three years ago?
Twenty fifteen?
My god.
Yeah, five years ago. Oh, my god.
I think it's a really different, right? There was already something there.
It was actually a vacant piece of property.
Yeah, it's vacant.
It was wide open. I just
It was probably more than four years ago, Ellen.
Yeah.
I don't think I participated in that.
Yeah, it's five. That's what we just said, five.
Forever, took forever for it to even get started.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish we could start putting some restrictions on that. Because, uh, like, it's more like you you get it to the commission and gets approved when you're sort of ready to build. Uh, especially if you're not looking for any exemptions or anything like that. Because if something like that took five years and the time when the economy was booming, Then we will have no control over how many we actually Uh, especially if it's an empty lot and it was not something which was already generating income. So It it's going to make our life much harder if we if we have to meet quotas and we have no idea about How soon what we actually, uh, grant permits for or approve will get dealt.
That's true, although there's there's an interesting inverse relationship. When the economy does very strongly, then Builders would rather work on Apple's building or Google's building than they than they want to work on an apartment building in Cupertino or Actually, the even better example of that would be Marina. You know, I think that that project largely was, um, Never really took off, even though it got approval, and I think they were eager to build it. It was very difficult for them to to get, um, To get workers That could do this at the cost that was going to make sense, the original way that they played it out.
Okay.
Yeah, but that was more of a, that was more of like an EB five mil. I mean, they're just selling Citizenship and that puppy. That was a little bit different story.
Well, the Marina also had that that, um, I think there was some litigation involving
That's correct.
The Bank of America.
Oh, yeah, a lot.
Got this, yeah, right. So are we through neighborhoods and we're, uh, Inspiration Heights neighborhood? Are we at Uh, we've moved into Oak Valley. We mentioned a little bit about Fair Grove. I think we're on to the next page. Is that correct? Okay.
Only that first row.
So we're at availability of housing, designate sufficient land at appropriate densities to accommodate Cupertino's Rena of one thousand sixty four. That was a doable number. Sorry.
State Central Politburo of Planning. Thank you.
Okay.
How far did you go? Uh, actually, just to staff, how far are we going? Um, to what page or to what HE one, three, four?
I I think this might be a good point to kind of, I I haven't really gone much past this in terms of updates, and I'm still waiting for some updates on the rest.
Okay, yeah, because I thought we were ending somewhere around here, so.
Yeah, yeah, Jennifer's had her hand raised. Uh, so if we open it to public comment and then Close and and Uh, at, we'll end at the Fair Grove neighborhood. We want, ready to do that? Yes?
Sounds good.
Okay, okay. So at this point, we have gotten to Through a policy LU thirty point two, and we're going to open it up for public comment. And I have one hand raised. It's Jennifer Griffin.
Uh, yes, hopefully I fell asleep and woke up back up again. Um, anyway, yes, I wanted to go back a long way back. I think you guys were talking about The frontage of Valco on Stevens Creek and whether that was in Part of the city, and I'm assuming we're talking about The section that was in front of Sears would be from, uh, Oh, gosh, um, The 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 part where the, uh, that goes between Wolf And then the, if you, on the right side would be The east side would be Wolf running westward towards downtown Cupertino And stopping at, um, the the Frontage Road there. To my understanding, and I mean, I have, this goes way back to the beginning Of Heart of the City, even before the purchase of Valco by Sand Hill in twenty eleven, I think. That has always been in Heart of the City. And I, that section, and if someone claims That it was not in Heart of the City, I Do not recall it ever being taken out of Heart of the City Unless Sand Hill started talking about it being Not part of the Heart of City after they purchased the property After the redevelopment agency was taken down from the property. So I, we may need to explore that. Um, I understand, I would understand that the look and feel of the rest of Heart of the City Across that front of the property, which is mainly trees, Et cetera, and the full, I expect that to be retained as the full thirty five foot setback. Uh, it it has never been taken out of Heart of the City. And we need to, if we have to, we have to pursue that history of it and nail that down. Because you cannot have a developer Purchase a chunk of land regardless of what's on it, and they cannot take Their property out of Heart of the City. Now, it maybe it's fortunate that that is the only part of Valco That is within Heart of the City because the rest of it Falls far away from Heart of the City and certainly the part that's by J C Penney's, Um, which has been sitting vacant since Emily Chen had the property. Um, that's not in Heart of the City. So yes, I I think we need to pursue that because You cannot remove your property from Heart of the City. And I don't know when that happened, but it's still, in my mind, it's Heart of the City. But, you know, we'll we'll leave it at that. Um, also, I think that that was going back to The north side of, yeah, the north side with retail across from nineteen hundred on Valco Parkway. That part that was Penny's, that was Penny's, and God, I wish we had Penny's back. Um, that really should have retail on the bottom, you know? We are so strapped retail-wise now, especially with the That we really need to take a look at where our retail is. I'm I'm really sorry. We need more retail. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Retail's dead.
Okay, so let's see if we have any further comments. And seeing no further comments, we close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Did anyone want to add any further comments to the last Set that we've just reviewed of the general plan? Do you have any further comments?
I just want to thank staff for keeping us moving along at a good pace, and so we're not doing this like in all-nighters. So thank you very much.
Yes, really appreciated.
Great, all right, and thank you to staff. So we are finished with item three. Old Business, the General Plan Annual Report Review, and we move on to staff and commission reports. Do we have any staff and commission reports?
No staff reports, chair.
Okay, any commission reports? And hearing no commission reports, I am going to call this meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night. Night.